Charsworth to Warner Center and from Charsworth to North Hollywood.
Altogether, the project will add four new stations, three new parking lots, a new busway bridge, a new bus parking facility, new street crossings and street improvements. Officials say with 80% of the project already completed, the extension is on track for a June 2012 opening. For LA this week, I'm Yana Kay.
About 9,000 new daily transit trips are expected on the extension by 2020. A new signpost has been erected outside the LA Convention Center. The sign proudly boasts to locals and visitors alike the sisterly relationships the City of Angels maintains with cities around the world.
There's no arguing that Los Angeles is a city of diversity and its loudest cheerleader, LA City Councilmember Tom Labonge, is quick to show off that diversity in several different languages.
Habagahu Maga. Good Morgan. Good Morgan, alright. Buongiorno. Buenos dias. Bu- bujou.
Labonge, Chairman of Los Angeles Sister Cities Incorporated, is unveiling a new signpost that will welcome the world to the Los Angeles Convention Center for years to come. And just like the one across from LA City Hall, this new sign located outside the LA Convention Center at 1201 South Figueroa Street showcases the city's relationship with 24 other cities throughout the world, cities like Beirut, Lebanon, Eliot, Israel, Ischia, Italy, and Split, Croatia.
And someone will walk right down this courtyard here and they'll look up there and they'll say, "I want to go to Bordeaux. I want to go to Nagoya. I want to go to Mumbai. I want to go to St. Petersburg. I want to go somewhere." And I think that's the beauty of travel and the experience of life.
And for that reason, the signpost was unveiled to coincide with the 14th Annual Los Angeles Times Travel Show at the Convention Center, which took place the last weekend in January. Consul generals and staff from the Consulate General of Los Angeles's 24 official sister cities were on hand for the unveiling.
We're very encouraged about the future, about creating more business relationships between our sister city, all of our sister cities, and the city of Los Angeles.
But at the heart of it, Labonge says the Sister Cities program is not just about travel or business relationships.
It's the people-to-people program. And that's what's so important. People-to-people.
And while the people gathered for the celebration represent an impressive two dozen cities spanning the globe, there's always room for more.
President Dwight D. Eisenhower created the Sister Cities program in 1956 to build global cooperations, stimulate economic development, and promote cultural understanding. For more information on the program, go to sister-cities.org. And one city famous the world over is of course Hollywood. And as the glamour capital of the world, it was only fitting that the red carpet was rolled out for Hollywood's 125th birthday celebration. Yana Kay has more.
Happy Birthday to you.
Complete with a cake and candles, it was a birthday celebration fit for a star.
Hollywood's 125 years old. Hollywood's everybody's dream and hope. Hollywood has been so much to so many, and it's in its second golden age.
Hollywood celebrities, LA City officials, and community members came out to Hollywood and Highland for the red carpet celebration of Hollywood's 125th birthday, including comedian Jimmy Kimmel, who does his show in the heart of Hollywood.
For me, especially because this is my neighborhood, and you know, when you think about 125 years, there aren't too many things in this country that are 125 years old. I think we have Larry King, and that's about it.
On display were items from Hollywood's golden era, an Emmy Award, shots of Marilyn Monroe, and other memorabilia. Now various historical photos from Hollywood were also on display. Now take a look at this. This is a picture of Grauman's Egyptian Theater back in 1920. These old Hollywood photographs represent the transformation of Hollywood throughout the years. And officials say the area will continue to thrive and prosper as more businesses and residents move to Hollywood.
While we're celebrating 125th birthday, we're also celebrating, to me, Hollywood's second golden age, which we have emerged into because of the comeback of this area, the work the city has done with the business community and the residents to make a community we're proud of again.
Officials say they're working hard to make sure Hollywood remains the creative capital of the world. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
The birthday celebration was sponsored by Hollywood's Chamber of Commerce. Tourists may be lured to our region by the glitz and glamour of Hollywood, but LA City leaders are hoping that visitors will also discover the arts when they come to LA. Gil Reyes tells us about a new program that aims to capitalize on a record year for LA tourism.
An invitation from Hunter, the Tyrannosaurus Rex, to visit him and his pals at the Natural History Museum of LA County. It's one of several museums offering special discounts over the next three months.
Discover your own city. Use this as your opportunity to go and experience that cultural institution, that art gallery, that performance hall that you haven't been to yet.
The program's called Discover the Arts. It's an outgrowth of January's LA Arts Month. It's offering two-for-one admission rates at venues like the Grammy Museum, also the Peterson Automotive, Vende, and Hollywood Museums. The goal is to boost interest in those learning institutions dedicated to science, culture, and creativity in Los Angeles.
It's in the words of its writers and the stanzas of its poets, you can hear the spirit in the rhythms and the melodies of its singers and musicians.
LA's own Grammy-winning hip-hop heroes Ozo Motley showed up to support Discover the Arts, holding the spree outdoor performance at Disney Concert Hall. Last year, Los Angeles experienced a record year for tourism. 27 million visitors, according to the Los Angeles Convention and Visitors Bureau. City leaders hope the museum discounts help to break another record in 2012.
We're sending a message out to the rest of the country and to the rest of the world. Come to Los Angeles. Be part of the next new thing. Come here and experience the full richness of all of the cultures that come together here in Los Angeles. Make this your destination.
Discover the Arts LA and the discounts offered will last till April 30th, so come check it out. Outside Disney Concert Hall, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
For principal coupons slashing up to 50% off admission, simply visit this website. That's discoverlosangeles.com/thearts. All participating museums and their discounts are listed. Another part of the city that aspires to be a tourist destination is a historic part of downtown Los Angeles that's been undergoing a rejuvenation over the last decade. Cindy San Luis introduces us to Broadway Boulevard's newest resident and the glitz and glamour she's bringing to the historic core.
One of historic Broadway Theater District's Diamonds in the Rough will soon shine again as world-renowned jewelry designer Tarina Tarantino brings her talents to Broadway with her upcoming Sparkle Factory.
We would look at this building every day and say, "Wouldn't that be the cutest building for us?" I mean, look at, look up at the top at the facade. It almost has a tiara at the top. It's just meant to be.
This 23,800-square-foot historic building was built in 1914 and is now undergoing a transformation to become a Sparkle Factory. This multi-use space has an innovative retail concept, including a Tarina Tarantino jewelry boutique, design headquarters, and production studio.
We have been huge fans of downtown LA, and we've always dreamt of really having our headquarters here in downtown.
The boutique, to be located in the old LL Bean Western Costume Design Building, will offer limited edition, four-Broadway-only merchandise, making this flagship location truly unique from its Melrose Avenue, New York City, and Milan sister shops.
To be able to not only continue to make our products in Los Angeles, but to make them in our very own factory right here on Broadway is extremely exciting.
The opening of the Sparkle Factory is just one part of the Bringing Back Broadway initiative, which began four years ago, and has been changing the facade of one of the city's most famous streets ever since.
Economically, 500,000 people drive to downtown each and every day to come to work. So we see the importance of downtown, and with this addition, we're going to see Broadway really, really take off.
The Sparkle Factory sits appropriately at the intersection of the Fashion District and the Historic Theater District on the corner of Broadway and 9th. Once fully leased, the building will be able to sustain over 90 additional creative industry jobs.
So many amazing things have happened here. It's got such an incredible energy, so we're really, really excited about the possibilities of what it will become.
Tarantino plans to open doors to the public by early fall of this year. From the LL Bean Western Costume Design Building in downtown Los Angeles, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA this week.
Tarina Tarantino is famous for jewelry featuring sparkling Swarovski crystals and lucite. She has collaborated with brands the likes of Paul Mitchell, Hello Kitty, Barbie, and Wizard of Oz. A new council member is sworn in, a health clinic that caters just to women, and free trees for Angelenos. These stories and more in City Beat.
Hi, Joe Buscaino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Joe Buscaino, the city's newest council member, was sworn in by the Los Angeles City Clerk and City Council last week. Buscaino's family members were in council chambers for the swearing and ceremony. Buscaino beat out Warren Furutani in January's special runoff election for the city's council District 15 seat, left vacant by now Congresswoman Janice Hahn. District 15 covers the harbor area and includes the communities of San Pedro, Wellington, and Watts. The U.S. Labor Department is looking into payments over several years totaling $1 million, allegedly approved by members of the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum Commission, that were delivered in cash to someone with the union representing stagehands working at events held at the Coliseum. This according to the LA Times. Los Angeles City Controller Wendy Gruel announced in July that she was beginning the city's first top-to-bottom audit of the publicly-owned venue. California Hospital Medical Center celebrated the grand opening of its Los Angeles Center for Women's Health with a reception and tour that was opened to the public. The 16,000-square-foot facility will offer screening, diagnosis, and treatment of female cancers, heart disease, and other health issues faced by women.
As we see the needs of the community change, we evolve. We evolve and we grow so that we can start to provide those services to this community.
The center is located downtown at 1513 South Brand Avenue. The LA Conservation Corps gave away shade trees on a recent weekend to anyone interested who lives in the city of Los Angeles.
Well, I'm taking advantage of the free tree program that the city has for us today, and it's, we have a garden workday tomorrow, so it just coincides that we'll be planting this tree at our new community garden in Alision Valley.
They have found out that there's less trees in these areas, like South Central, East LA, but it's mostly, they're highly densely populated, but we don't have too many trees in those areas.
A recent study revealed Los Angeles only has 21% tree canopy cover. That's below the national average of 27%. The Islamic Center of Reseda promotes cooperation and understanding between the Muslim community and the wider community. Councilmember Dennis Zine joined local, state, and federal officials to celebrate the grand opening of the center's new home. Here's Yana Kay. The opening of the center was the culmination of a seven-year effort that involved not only fundraising, but community outreach that touched the hearts of Los Angeles city and county officials.
We celebrate today what we could make out of tomorrow. We have our eyes on the future and how to make it better. And the real lesson of America is that government alone can't make a better future. It must come from the morality and civic engagement of the populace.
We must also stand in front of harm that attacks any one religion in this great nation because the faith that you have as Muslim Americans is absolutely guaranteed in the Constitution of the United States.
Councilman Zine presented the center with a proclamation from city officials, noting the unifying belief that brings all Angelenos together.
And when I look at that American flag on the wall, that American flag on Iowa, that's what we're here for. The red, white, and blue, doesn't matter what your religion, doesn't matter what your skin color, what it matters is we believe in what that flag represents, liberty, freedom, and justice for all.
The Islamic Center of Reseda is a non-political, nonprofit, independent organization for adults, children, and youth. For LA this week, I'm Yana Kay.
In this week's list of things to do, a Valentine's party thrown by those behind the Siklavaia cycling events, a photography exhibit featuring some famous faces, and teaching kids all about healthy living. Siklavaia is hosting a Valentine's party from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Friday, February 10th at Atwater Crossing, which is located at 3245 Casitas Avenue. Bring your Valentine or meet a new Valentine there. There will be music, speed dating, a raffle, an auction, photo booths, and much more. Admission is free, but bring money for drinks, eats, and the auction, of course. An appreciation of past volunteers, free drinks for the first 20 Siklavaia volunteers. Organizers will also be signing up new volunteers for the April 15, 2012 Siklavaia. For more information and to RSVP, go to Siklavaia's Facebook event page. And it's your last chance to catch the TV Life exhibit of photographs by John Van Hamersfeld at the Darkroom Gallery downtown. The exhibit ends on Saturday, February 11. Hamersfeld's best known for his legendary poster for the 1964 blockbuster surf film, The Endless Summer, and his album covers for the likes of The Beatles, The Rolling Stones, and The Grateful Dead. His TV Life photo exhibit brings together a collection covering an important 15-year period of his life, starting from the mid-'70s, of his Los Angeles experiences, including photographs taken of some of his famous friends, as well as a selection of his iconic posters and graphic artwork. The Darkroom Gallery is located at 727 South Spring Street. More info can be found by calling 323-271-5635. And if you've got young kids at home and you're looking for some free family fun, head on over to the Japanese-American National Museum at 100 North Central Avenue in Little Tokyo for the Target-sponsored Free Family Saturday event from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on February 11. February's theme is healthy living. Different workshops throughout the day teach healthy recipes that kids can also help make, like delicious miso soup or kebabs. There's even an origami class and a traditional Japanese bonodori dance class. Admission is free all day, including access to the museum's exhibitions. Call 213-625-0414 for detailed information. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Residents lined the streets of Chinatown for the 113th Annual Golden Dragon Parade that helps usher in the Year of the Dragon, the most fortuitous sign of the Chinese zodiac. If you need a second chance to start the new year afresh, you've got it. Chinese New Year, based on the lunar calendar, fell this year on January 23rd. The annual parade through LA's Chinatown was celebrated that following weekend with the help of local dignitaries that included LA City Councilmember Jan Perry and LA County Supervisor Zev Yaroslavsky.
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year!
This is a great tradition in Los Angeles, not only for the Chinese-American community, but for all Angelenos to celebrate the Chinese New Year in Chinatown, one of the great neighborhoods and great communities of America.
Paradegoer May Razkowski, speaking in Mandarin, her native tongue, wished everyone happiness in the coming spring.
Good New Year! New Year's快乐!
And new clothes are in order to usher in a new year of prosperity, and that goes for the little ones as well. And there's no better color than red to signal prosperity and good fortune.
Happy New Year! Happy New Year! This is a really good place to be. We wish you were here.
Paradegoers could be seen holding traditional paper umbrellas and donning traditional cone field hats of farmers to shield them from the California sun as they take in dragon dancers, martial arts performances, the Miss Chinatown float, and much more.
So many people came out this year because of the beautiful weather. What better thing than we can do than celebrate the diversity, Chinese New Year, and this great weather that we have in the city of LA? Happy New Year, everyone! Gongke Fat Choy!
May the Year of the Dragon bring your family and our great city prosperity and good luck.
Serving as the parade grand marshal was Lisa C., author of the popular novels Snowflower and The Secret Fan and Shanghai Girls. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow us on Facebook for stories you might have missed. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
And yet today, our community has council district lines that politically divide us.
I argue that the status quo is unacceptable.
Every 10 years, the boundaries of the city council districts must be redrawn. This process is called redistricting. The commission needs your input on a new redistricting plan. Join us at our next meeting and help us serve you.
Redistricting!
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the council meeting today. My name is Herb Wesson. I'm the president of the Los Angeles City Council. This council meets on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We invite, all our meetings are open, and we invite the public to come and participate. With that said, I believe that we do have a quorum present. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon Buscaino, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Labonge, Parks, Prey, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson, Plummer is present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Alrighty then. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendahl moves. Mr. Krikorian, second. What's next?
Communitary resolutions for approval.
Mr. Englander moves. Garcetti, second. And, yes, Madam Clerk.
Today is Tuesday, Mr. President. Now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay. I was going to step on your line, but I want you to earn your pay. So if I could ask everyone in council chambers to please rise, and we will be led in our flag salute by Mr. Tom Labonge.
All rise. This morning, face the flag of the United States of America. Hand over heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, when we just did the pledge of allegiance, we said liberty and justice for all. I just want to announce that the court ruled for basic civil and human rights for gays and lesbians. It's a moment in history that I just want us to reflect on. It will end up, I think, in the Supreme Court, and hopefully, the Supreme Court will give us the same basic human and civil rights that other places in this country have. Pretty soon, we'll be able to perform marriages again in California. But most importantly, the federal laws have to change that give us the basic inheritance rights, insurance rights, that heterosexuals take for granted. So it's a great day, and it was a great day to salute my flag and my country. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl, thank you very much for starting today's council off on such a wonderful note. Thank you. Okay, at this time, why don't we try to run through the agenda?
Mr. President, before we begin, there's a request to continue Items 1 and 2 to February 22nd.
Without objection.
Items 3 through 15 are Items, our Department of Building and Safety liens, noted for public hearing. The department reports that Items 4, 6, and 8 may be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid.
Without objection. We will receive and file those items. Are there any cards?
No cards.
Okay. Members' specials. Okay, without no specials, then why don't we open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
13. 13 eyes.
Next.
Items 16 through 18 are items which public hearings have been held.
Specials, members?
17.
17 by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? Okay, then let's, on the remaining items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Thank you. Next.
Items 19 through 39 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection. Ms. Perry would like to call 20 special. Mr. Rosendahl, item 24.
Number 19, Mr. President.
Mr. Kakkorian, number 19. Excuse me?
38.
Ms. Perry, Miss Number 38. Are there any cards?
There's cards on items 22, 27, 30, 36, and 39.
Cards on 39, I was gonna call 39 special. 39.
And 39. Oh, it's already held anyway, Mitch, Mr. Englander. So why don't we open the roll, get ready, prepare to open the roll on the remaining items? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, where are we?
There's one more item. On the supplemental agenda, there item 40 is an item which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection. Specials?
Fourth with.
On which item?
22, 23, 25, and 26. 22, 23, 25, and 26.
Well, 22's been held. So anyway, let's move forthwith on the items that Mr. Zion suggested, except for the ones that have been held.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any cards on item 40?
Yes, there's cards.
Okay. So where does that bring us on the agenda?
Now would be the time for general public comment or for items called special?
Okay, I'm gonna ask Mr. Labange to come forward to take the calm and go through the public comment process.
We have one card for the Valley, so we'll take Donna Perman for the Valley, public comment, and then close public comment in the Valley. Donna Perman.
Okay, here I am. And yeah, you named correctly, thank you. Anyway, Miriam is sick and couldn't come, so real loss not to hear her views. I'm hoping that she gets well, well, soon. Anyway, I'm gonna vote for Eric Garcetti for mayor, because our city can't afford to lose him in 2013. He's a fine man. And people, I want people to please fight the sales tax increase. And it will go to the nearest newest CRA, or whatever the name they're gonna give it, or others such money-hungry agencies. I ask people, please don't vote for the bond issues. The money is never spent where it should go. It just raises property taxes and rents, yes, rents, and the landlord has to spend more, they pass it to the renter. They don't use it correctly, and they come back for more. You gain nothing but it by heartache. It's like the city council who uses our money in the wrong way and then asks for more to cover it. Like the MTA takes money for future uses from projects needed today. We don't have enough buses, Mr. Kretz and Mr. Rosendahl. We have a bus problem, CD 5 to CD 11, Wilshire Boulevard to Westwood, to the beach. The 720 Santa Monica, the Wilshire bus, runs sporadically, especially hurts our veterans who stop at Wilshire and Bonzel because of the short line 720, saying Westwood only goes to Federal Building and turns around and goes downtown. We need to have a lot more 720s, and we need them to go the whole way. We also need to update LA DOT to take the tap card. There's not enough paper passes sold, and only, they sell only on one day. And though the driver told me the MTA drivers prefer the paper passes, there's a problems with the tap. Perhaps we should increase the number of paper passes. And, okay, anyway, we need to stop, and I don't believe the CRA is gone, the CRA is not dead, it's just sleeping. I'll be back on the other things.
Thank you very much. Now for public comment. The first public comment is Dr. Tom Williams, Dr. John Walsh, and Dr. Sean Murphy.
Good morning, Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, from the great district of El Cerrano. We're quite interested in the budget, not this year's budget, but next year's budget. The mayor's office and many of the neighborhood councils are participating in the budget survey. That is, what do we want you to keep? What do we want you to reduce? But there's still fundamental elements. The Bureau of Sanitation seems to be exempt from any budget review. Department of Public Works, of course, the Harbor Department, and LAWA, LAX, are also exempt from this budget survey. So we're kind of confused as to what we can cut and what's left to cut. Oh, by the way, there's an Office of Emergency Management. We don't know what they do. It seems to be a kind of CRA in disguise, I don't know. But it has a budget of $770 million and over 2,500 employees. It seems quite suitable for a lot of cuts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you need any help on that office, Dr. Williams, come to the ropes and have our staff explain. Sean Murphy, John Walsh, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair of City Council. I want to thank my councilmen in CD 2 for fixing Laurel Canyon. The street was repaid this, the streets was repaid this weekend. It was, it was good, good, thank you. Our street still needs to be repaid. I agree with Donna Perman on the buses. We need more buses. We need the 720 to go all the way. Also, I wanted to let her know I'm still worried about the projects being built. I didn't, I wasn't misled last week. I'm worried about the projects like St. Charles Borromeo's refurbishing. I'm worried about the projects, just want to explain that to her, okay? Thank you.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Come to us, last two weeks, 67,000 successful server requests. See Jerry Brown as Rosemary's baby. As you know, yesterday, when I was here last time, what happened? You tried to take my First Amendment rights away, Mickey Jackson. And fortunately, he's my new best friend, because Eric told him to come back and apologize to me. So the deputy city attorney is now my new best friend. If you want to know what's happening in Hollywood or in Los Angeles, you come to our website. Who is Nelson Rising? He is now the head of the most powerful agency in Los Angeles. What's that? The successor agency to the CRA. And at the meeting last Thursday, last Friday, not one single person in the media showed up at that meeting. Billions of dollars on the table. You want to know what's happening in Los Angeles? You come to HollywoodHighlands.org. And I'm telling you, you no longer have control over the CRA. Nelson Rising has control of the CRA. An eccentric multimillionaire that I'm sure nobody has heard of until you come and find out why Jerry Brown picked him. I'm telling you right now that you must come to our website, HollywoodHighlands.org, and find out how we're gonna stay dead, CRA. Not drop dead, stay dead, coalition statewide. You will not win. Come to HollywoodHighlands.org. See us right now on our website. HollywoodHighlands.org. You know what you can do with your extra five seconds.
Daniel Gus, Mr. Herman Arnold Sacks.
I'm smiling this morning because Commissioner Ruth Ann Secunda, the corrupt commissioner, resigned. That's a good thing, one less corrupt official in the city of Los Angeles. It's pathetic, though, that LAPD resources were squandered to try to intimidate my whistleblowing activities. If there's no police presence at Animal Services next week, it means that that's exactly what they were trying to do. Squander police resources because Lou Parker gives sex to the mayor. If you're a friend of Lou Parker's, you and your friends can intimidate whistleblowers. We'll talk about that later. But the big news today is an email I have here from Jim Bickhart, that genius up in the mayor's office. Jim Bickhart, in an email to Eric Garcetti's office in December, says that Secunda's attendance record, in which she missed more than 40% of commission meetings, is in the average range for city commissioners, and is quote-unquote "more than acceptable." Let's focus on that. Jim Bickhart of the mayor's office says that if you miss 40% of your commission meetings, it's more than acceptable. At what point does a commissioner's absenteeism become just acceptable? If you miss 70%? At what point does a commissioner's absenteeism become bad? If you miss 90%? Here's an email that I'm gonna give to John Walsh and to Ron Kay. The mayor's mouthpiece, Jim Bickhart, and I'm gonna remind every commissioner that comes here, if you miss 40% of your commission meetings, it's more than acceptable. How about a pat on the back for commissioners who miss 40% of their meetings? The reason why we're killing 22,000 animals is because we have geniuses like Jim Bickhart overseeing it for the mayor's office. And this is gonna become a hallmark of all of my future commentaries here. Miss 40% of your meetings, commissioners, and the mayor's office thinks that's more than acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis Doherty, Teresa Brady, and finally, the last card is Armin Njorion.
Good morning, counsel. Phyllis Doherty, I'm here today as a former city employee, also as a fully-trained humane officer, in which capacity I'm not working at the time. I'm also a member of State Humane Association and the California Animal Control Directors' Association Associate Member, because I'm also obviously not an animal control director. My degree is in criminal justice, and I am here today to speak on behalf of my colleagues in animal protection, the employees of Los Angeles Animal Services, who are working under a reign of terror. And many of them have been placed under a gag order so that they cannot speak for themselves, not just once, but continuously. Captains with impeccable service records have been placed on back-to-back suspensions for very, very nominal offenses, according to the general manager and the assistant general manager, she being an admitted breeder, and he sued by five employees for sexual harassment and discrimination when he was working for the city of Riverside. With this, with this department being removed from Public Safety Committee and the oversight of those who understand law enforcement, many of us are concerned that in evaluating Mrs. Barnett's actions, the new head of the Department of Employee Personnel will not be able to be objective. He was involved in her hiring process, he has been supportive of every action she has taken, and he was named in numerous emails that I received under a CPRA request. Someone in this council must realize that public animals and safety are in tremendous danger. We have no emergency preparedness, no wildlife program, and we have a staff that is fully unmotivated and terrorized. Please, someone, take the interest in talking with them. If you want to talk to someone who's not under a gag order, I can help you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sacks? That T-shirt I don't like, Mr. Sacks.
I'm sorry, sir.
I know, I just want, Arnold, why don't you change your T-shirt for me, Arnold? We have a family program here.
It's a cable channel, sir.
I know, but I don't.
Listen, I can.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Kakkorian?
There's absolutely no reason that the camera needs to be on, Mr. Sacks. We can have a long shot.
I'd have a long shot.
Exposed to his highly offensive T-shirt.
Very good. Thank you very much, and that's a good point, Mr. Kakkorian. Roll the clock back to two minutes. You are disrupting the meeting with your T-shirt. Continue your comment. Thank you.
And I would ask the Channel 35, keep the camera angle on the horse shoe, please.
My time is being, you want to talk about disparaging remarks. As long as Councilman Reyes sits up on that board, I just paid $14 for my monthly bus pass, and he's been allowed to sit on the Gold Line Construction Authority five years before it was even allowed by the state legislation. $14. I would imagine that between 300,000 and 500,000 people have spent $14 extra because the MTA doesn't have the funds to cover the costs that they supposedly incur. That comes out to between 400, $4,200,000 and $7, $7 million per month, which comes out to between 42 and 70 million dollars. When you start paying $14 a month out of your money to go to such stupidity that's incurred on the public by the actions by the MTA, and don't question why Mr. Reyes is allowed to sit on that particular board, fine. You cut my time, you cut my picture, that's fine. Somebody will get the message sooner or later. You talk about being insulted. I've come down here plenty of times. But to see him sit up there and not have to answer a question, and how he could sit there, and by the way, February is DWP transfer month. We'll hear how you discuss that item. But again, $14 a month that I'm paying, in addition to the other people, and you heard people talk about the lack of bus service, but money goes to the Gold Line Construction Authority for six years, and property is bought by the LA to Pasadena Blue Line Construction Authority, another entity that has no official existence. You talk about being upset, Mr. Labange. I'm very upset about that, because it comes directly out of my pocket. When it comes directly out of your pocket, then you'll understand how upsetting it can be.
That completes public comment with the last speaker, Mr. Njorion, then we have your card. That's the only card I have. Mr. Reyes?
Mr. Chair, just pointing a fact, despite the insulting T-shirt that Mr. Sacks is wearing that is disruptive to the meeting, his facts are also off in terms of accuracy. The city attorney has reviewed my status on the Golden Authority. Legislative work has been established that legitimizes my presence in the Golden Authority as well as my membership here in the council. So I want to state that for the record. Again, it's unfortunate that Mr. Sacks spends his time, precious public time, on falsehoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Njorion, please speak, and we have additional cards that just came in. Come up here, sir. Yes. Ma'am, I'm gonna call you in a minute. You, sir. I know, but I called him first.
Respectable City Council members, my name is Armin Aknuyan. I'm a liberal Democrat, a human rights advocate, and I announced my candidacy to run for the seat of California State Assembly. I ran my election campaign on principles of racial integration, social justice, environmental protection, and technological revolution. I actually, as a tax-and-spend liberal, I will raise taxes against wealthy, tax-weighted rich corporations 50%, especially against oil-producing, gasoline-selling wealthy outlets which should pay very fair share. And actually, the very fact that Proposition O failed by only by 2%, but it still scored 49% among Angelenos, according to LA City Clerk's dot org website. And I believe that you should raise taxes against all producer manufacturers at least $2 per barrel of oil produced in Los Angeles County, like all our smart city councils do, in order to replenish your resources. You suffer budget deficit, and unless you start raising taxes against wealthy homeowners and oil-producing manufacturers... and oil-producing manufacturers, you won't have enough money to run, live money to run city services. And if this politics of a city council are sometimes irresponsible, because it actually benefits only the wealthy, it doesn't benefit city workers. I also demand cutting down egregious wages of city council members of over $178,000 in half, and giving that money to increasing salaries of city workers, including firemen, police officers, and janitors and clerks. And also, I demand also closing down so-called medical marijuana dispensers, very poor Californians, big time. Last year, Proposition 56 failed, and the majority of Californians voted against legalized marijuana. So 56% of Californians will vote for me, will vote for banning so-called medical marijuana dispensaries.
Thank you very much. Now, the next set of cards from the Sierra Club. Please let me welcome Kathy Seal, James Ralston from Los Angeles, as well as Mr. Herman from Los Angeles. The next three speakers. Kathy Seal? Is there a Kathy Seal here in the chambers? James Ralston? This is Kathy.
Hi, I'm here to speak on behalf for Item 36, the statewide legislation to ban Styrofoam. I'm here on behalf of Sierra Club. I would urge the council to support this measure for many reasons. Two of them are the...
Mr. Labange, that item is on the agenda, and so...
Thank you very much. These were handled to me, I apologize.
Oh, okay, for later.
Kathy, I'm going to call you again.
Thank you.
I made an error. I apologize for making an error. Let me clarify that. Let me call on Mr. Herman right now. Mr. Herman, to speak.
Council members, good morning, and fellow residents of Los Angeles. Are city officials apathetic to those with disabilities? Are city officials sensitive to those with disabilities? The reason I'm speaking tonight, or today, is because of access. Why has a city not developed a comprehensive plan for people and pedestrians to use public sidewalks safely? Again, why has a city not developed a comprehensive plan for people and pedestrians to use public sidewalks? Well, the answer is very simple. The city's failure hasn't been a story about cities' inability, it's to finance for people who have disabilities access, but they lack political will to do so. Lack political will to do so. I'm a strong believer in access for people with disability. I'm a strong believer in the rights of people with disability, but there has to be more done to assist people with disabilities. They need to be heard. We got this way, or, at this point, because city is not willing to invest in its infrastructure. I can take you anywhere in Boyle Heights, I can take you anywhere in the city of Los Angeles, poor sidewalks, street crossings, pathways, corridors. They're a danger and the safety of those who have disabilities, whether they're visual, whether they're an Wilchers, or whether a person, who might be even myself, using a public sidewalk. Noncompliance of these codes are violation for the city to not just improve, but think of what the federal mandate says about access from the misuse or non-use of sidewalks in our city.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Thank you.
Ms. Brady? Last public comment card, thank you. Now, public comment will be closed after Ms. Brady.
Hi, I ask you to approve the appeal by the Woodland Hills Homeowners Association on the subdivision and conditional use permit for Westfield LLC. Our concern, well, my concern, and I'm hoping to have a group behind me within the next few weeks, when you hear this in a couple of weeks, but my concern is that the CUPs include a gas station at the Costco site on Owens Mountain Victory, that the EIR states that the gas station tank is situated two feet below the water table, and from some sources, that's as much as eight feet below the water table, and that cracks in gas tanks often happen, and so that that would be a threat to water quality. It also is a threat, because Woodland Hills is known to have liquefied soil, and so that that would be very easily into the groundwater and the river. And I support clean water, pedestrian-friendly planning, and forward-looking development, which supposedly this project was. It also does not create any new jobs, because they're planning on closing the other Costco, which is only two miles away, so they will be, no net new jobs when you close one and you start another. It's really a little bit duplicitous to say that you're creating jobs. Okay? So I hope that you will deny the project based on the gas station and the fact that they've been a little duplicitous about their creating jobs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That completes our public comment for this day. Madam Clerk, let's take the first item, number 17. Oh, I'm sorry.
If I can, for Mr. Alacon, if I can, Mr. President, to continue Item 14 for 21 days, please.
Okay, so then we've got to reconsider 14.
Correct? Reconsider that?
Yes, Mr. President, reconsider 14.
Okay, open the roll for reconsideration. Close the roll. Okay, that matter has complete. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
14 ayes, thank you. So let's open for continuation. Open the roll, close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
14 ayes, okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Let's go back to our agenda. Item number 17. Madam Clerk, will you call that for us?
Item number 17, called special by councilmembers Buscayeno and Garcetti.
Very good. Councilmember Buscayeno.
Mr. President, members, thank you so much. I wanted to take the time here to stand in support of this item. My predecessor, Janice Hahn, stood along with several of my colleagues here to introduce the motion last year that would name City Hall East after Mayor James K. Hahn. And I think it is definitely quite fitting to do just that. He served 24 years as Controller, City Attorney, and the mayor of this great city, I think the only individual to serve all three offices, to hold all three offices, and Mayor Hahn continues to be beloved in the San Pedro community. And he brought great leadership to the LAPD and restored community-based policing. And as a senior lead officer, I can truly say how beneficial community-based policing has been throughout this city. And I think it's fitting to honor his public service to the city by naming not only just this building, but City Hall East after Mayor James K. Hahn. And it's great to see both business and labor here to support this motion, and I respectfully ask for an aye vote. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was proud to join with Councilwoman, now Congresswoman, Hahn, and a number of other members to introduce this motion. In honor of a man who I had the great joy of serving with alongside, and somebody who is the only man to hold all three citywide elected offices as Controller, City Attorney, and Mayor, somebody who in his time helped us make sure that we had a safer city than we've ever had, somebody who beat back the challenge of secession when the city was threatened to be ripped apart, not just in one place, but in three places, and somebody who, to me, embodies what public service is about. He was raised in public service. He always and continues to keep the public first and foremost in his mind, and somebody who does it very humbly, modestly, and powerfully. I can think of no better testament. When folks first came to me, when Janice said, hey, you know, what do you think about doing this together? I said, I think it's wonderful. City Hall East was a building in which he spent a lot of his time as City Attorney and City Controller, and certainly somebody who was able to make his imprint. While he only served as mayor for four years, in many ways, he really guided us through, in this generation, the toughest years that we faced as a city entity, and for that, I think it would be a great service. And when you think about it, it would be wonderful, just up the new civic park that's about to open, you have Kenneth Hahn Hall of Administration, and you can walk from one Hahn to another, seeing decades of amazing service from the Hahns in the city, and so I also rise in full support. And I look forward to hearing, I don't know if we can do a minute each or something, I know we had public hearing on this, but I know there are people that are here to speak again. I'd love to propose that we reopen just for a minute at least each, Mr. Labange.
That under consideration. Thank you. Mr. Alacon, please.
Councilmembers, it was my pleasure to chair the committee to make this recommendation to support the renaming of the building. Jim Hahn is a model in public service. The fact of the matter is that the Hahn family, I mean, if I had my druthers, we would name the building after all the Hahns, Gordon included, and Janice, and Kenny, and all of them, because they have singularly, more than any family, contributed more to Los Angeles in the government sector, and that's absolutely worthy of recognition. Jim Hahn, you know, I had the pleasure of working with Jim dating back to 1981, when I started with Mayor Bradley, and have watched several iterations of Jim Hahn. Now, there are those who might say that, well, you know, he wasn't the greatest mayor. And I would say, but he was a great public servant, because he absolutely cared about the city. He dedicated, you know, a huge chunk of his life, and I say that not to say that he doesn't have more to contribute, but he dedicated so much of his life and energy to this city. And that certainly, I think, sets him apart from all the other elected officials who have come and gone over the years. He continues to serve the public as a Superior Court judge, and I believe that that's the perfect place for him, because I always found him to be very judicious, very deliberate, very careful in his decisions, and that's why, that's exactly where we need him, in the Superior Court, and maybe even at a higher court. So it was without hesitation that I put my name on to support the renaming of this building in James Kenneth Hahn's name. He is, has been a friend, notwithstanding whatever you may think regarding a bunch of us who ran for mayor. But the fact is that he is a friend, and I do think this is the least we can do for somebody who's dedicated so much of their life to us and given us so much good out of that service. Thank you.
Mr. Rosedahl.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I really appreciate my colleagues' comments. I had the pleasure of knowing Jimmy from '81, when I started my television show, and he would come on all the time, and I watched his career continue to skyrocket, and then he became mayor. I think his qualities clearly are what my colleague said. He was a very humble, nice guy. My two brothers and I were at a dinner with him, where I was getting a plaque, and Warren Beatty was presenting it. He sat at the table the entire meal. My two brothers left feeling so empowered by him. Just regular guys, and he was a regular guy, and that kind of common touch that he exemplified was beautiful. The fact that he's a judge is even a better day now for all of us in the judicial system. He's a great man, and frankly, I think Richard Alacon was right, that the Hahns as a family have contributed so much to L.A. City and L.A. County, and it is very fitting to name the building across the way, which, you know, has the City Attorney's Office, where he spent many of his years there as City Attorney before he became mayor. It's a great idea, and I think it's beautiful for us to name it after him. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I also rise in support of this motion. We all had the chance to work with Jim in various iterations, and it was always, he was always common sense, level-headed, very direct, and very much grounded in community and family. But the thing I admire most about Jim is not only the way he spoke of his father and the lessons that he learned from him, but the way that he treated his mother, and particularly when she would be out at events, and sometimes Janice would be standing with her, but he always acknowledged her. He treated her with great delicacy and great appreciation, and a tremendous amount of recognition, and I think it speaks volumes about the kind of individual that he is. And I am very pleased that we are documenting our city's history for everyone to remember and to understand who he was and what he contributed.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Zein.
I'd like to join in the honoring of Jim Hahn. I've known Jim Hahn for many, many years, and Janice Hahn and I served on charter commission here on the city council, and that family, Hahn family, has been very supportive of Los Angeles for the many, many years. I received a call last night from the L.A. City Fire Association from Mr. McCosker, who said, we hope that you do support the naming of the City Hall East in honor of Jim Hahn. I would definitely do that, and I see Mrs. Hahn in council, standing there with Jim's brother, waiting anxiously to see how we're going to vote. Well, you got my vote, absolutely, 100%. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I proudly stand to support this motion and the renaming of City Hall East after James K. Hahn. I agree with everything's been said, and from the perspective of serving on the Board of Education, when I worked closely with Mayor Hahn, we were about to embark in one of the largest school construction programs in this nation's history, and our mayor then opened the doors of City Hall, assigned a point person to ensure we had one point of contact, and he worked very closely with us as we moved that construction program along. But more than that, I recall the times when we'd have events at schools, and the gleam and the happiness our mayor would see with our young people, and making sure that we provided them with the resources they need. That's something I would never forget. But I proudly stand up to support this. For the years that Mr. Hahn, Mayor Hahn, spent serving the city, this would be a great way of saying thank you, Mayor Hahn, for your service to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Kretz.
Well, Mr. Alacon said very eloquently what I wanted to say about the whole Hahn family, and wishing that we could dedicate something to all of them and their amazing public service. But I think because Jimmy Hahn, as a personality, was so understated, we don't always give him the credit that he deserves. Without a doubt, he is the most important mayor ever in the history of the great city of Los Angeles, because if he were not mayor at the time he were mayor, we wouldn't be the great city of Los Angeles, we would be the little city of Los Angeles. He truly, I believe, single-handedly led the effort to keep Los Angeles united, and he did so at a certain amount of political cost. There's no doubt in my mind that he lost his reelection, because he angered a lot of folks that wanted to break off various parts of the city. I think we very appropriately should recognize him for keeping this city together and for us remaining the great city of Los Angeles.
Very, very good words, Mr. Kretz. Thank you. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a privilege to rise in support of this motion to rename City Hall East in honor of James Kenneth Hahn, who, as Mr. Kretz said, is, I think, too often not given the credit that he is due for some incredible accomplishments during the course of his 24 years of service to this city. As mayor, it was Jim Hahn who began the increase in the ranks of our police department. It was Jim Hahn who demanded that we have an ambulance in every fire station in the city. It was Jim Hahn who stood up to make this one of the great green cities in the country by beginning our movement towards renewable energy, by beginning our conversion to hybrid vehicles, and it was Jim Hahn who stopped an investment that the city was going to make in a dirty coal plant in Utah. Jim Hahn began the movement towards reform of our tax code to help draw more jobs into Los Angeles, and Jim Hahn stood up for the schoolchildren of Los Angeles through expanded L.A. Best program and through greater use of public-private, I'm sorry, joint-use partnerships with L.A. USD. But most importantly of all, I think, it was Jim Hahn who kept this city together, as so many have said. But more than that, not only did he keep the city together, he kept the pledge that was part of keeping the city together, to empower communities throughout Los Angeles, to empower our neighborhoods, to create a neighborhood council program that went from zero neighborhood councils to 80 neighborhood councils by the time that he left office. And it was those commitments that he made to this city that I think we continue to work on enforcing and expanding in the work that we do today. But those were things that Jim Hahn initiated, and so it's a great privilege to be able to rise in support of this motion, and I hope that as each of us... of this motion, and I hope that as each of us walks into the new James K. Hahn City Hall East, it will inspire us to continue the important work that he began in all of these areas.
Thank you, Mr. Kokorian. Mr. Reyes.
I still recall the time when his name would be on our checks, back in the late '80s, early '90s, as comptroller, then city attorney. I want to thank my colleagues for their eloquence in speaking to his sacrifices and his ability to work in a very humble way in his role as mayor. Now, I look at his work. He's working as a judge, working with children. I know him as a board member for Loyola University, so he continues to give back to this community. So, it is a strong spirit, a good spirit, that will be reflected on that building with his name on it. One of the first supporters, and I can't forget when we had that first meeting, we called up the departments on the 10th floor, and we want to start at the whole issue of bringing the river back to life, and the incredulous look we had. But it was through his support that we actually had a page on the budget book just to focus on Los Angeles River. So, these are the many steps that occurred under his tutelage, and I want to thank him for his legacy and for his strength, more importantly, for his sacrifices.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Englander.
I don't want to repeat everything that's been said, so I'll say something that hasn't been said about Mr. Hahn, and that was about his sense of humor that a lot of people didn't get the opportunity to see often, and I did. And when I was the chief of staff for Councilman Smith, as you all know, I've been leading and co-hosting the L.A. Political Roasts for 15 years, which has become really a signature event in the city and in the state of California. It's become the largest political dinner and one of the largest fundraisers for diabetes in the last 15 years, and the year that we had roasted Mayor Hahn, we thought it would be fun to break into his office on a weekend and videotape a spoof with the then-council president, Alex Padilla. And I came down here on a Saturday morning when it was raining. We talked one of the security guards into letting us into his office, and we got caught. Now, the security card was fired by Mr. Hahn, no. Actually, what happened was the mayor at the time, Mr. Hahn, thought it was really funny, and he enjoyed it. Unfortunately, his chief of staff at the time, Tim McCosker, who's here in the building, in this room, didn't think it was so funny, and called the police chief, Bratton, who called me at home and threatened me and said, "You have to come down to City Hall tonight immediately. You're under arrest." And in any event, and we had to turn the tapes over that were videotaped in his private ceremonial office, and Jim Hahn had a lot of laughs about it. We joked about it for many years, but, you know, with all the things that you guys had said about him, were all true, and this is a guy who continues to care so much about this city and does so much. But I wanted to recognize his sense of humor and all the great things he's done for so many nonprofits throughout his career and continues to do, and also recognize Michelle as well, who she's done so much, and the entire Hahn family, and say that I proudly support this naming, and it's very appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mitch. I got a rule with Mr. Holden's permission, a one-minute public comment. A number of community leaders have come down to comment. I got to call all your names if you could come to make your comments on this item. Peter Repovich, Carol Schatz, Javier Nunez, if you could come to the podium area. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you very much for this opportunity. The Los Angeles Police Protective League, men and women, rise to support the naming of the City Hall East to beat James K. Hahn. The mayor, Mayor Hahn, was a great leader as the mayor. He has helped our officers and our members for 24 years, serving as comptroller, serving as city attorney, and serving as mayor. So, he's a good man. He deserved it. He's a man of the people, and I appreciate the fact that we had this opportunity to support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Carol Schatz, president of the Central City Association. I'm very privileged and honored to be able to speak in support of this motion. Jimmy Hahn is just, he's a mensch. For those of you who don't understand Yiddish, it means somebody who is a decent, wonderful human being, and he has given certainly the best years of his life and continues to do that for the city of Los Angeles. He personifies public service, and he paid the ultimate political sacrifice by doing the right thing and keeping this city together, and Council Member Caretz was quite right to bring that up. He's an honorable human being, and I was very pleased to have his partnership as we began the rebuilding of downtown L.A. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and City Councilmen and Women. My name is Javier Nunez, president of Labor's Local 300 here in Los Angeles, on behalf of Sergio Roscon, our business manager, representing 8,000 members here in the city of Los Angeles. Being a city servant or being a servant is not easy, as we seen this morning during public comment. It's a hard job. You have a hard job, and that's why we're here this morning in support of Item 17, and that is to give respect and honor to a servant. There is a way to address our servants of our city, or servants of our state, or servants of our federal government. It's unfortunate that there are people that don't know how to give that honor and that respect, so my respect to all of you. This morning, I asked you to give the same respect to James Hahn. He was a servant of the city of Los Angeles. His leadership service to the city was of great excellence to his community, the concern, and the well-being of the city of L.A. and the legacy. So, I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next call is Jimmy Woods Gray, Tim McCosker, and Pat McCosker.
Good morning, council. To President Wesson, Mr. Laban, to the new city council member, welcome, and to all of the other sitting council members. It is my pleasure to be here to support the committee's recommendation for James Kenneth Hahn. I have never worked with, and I've worked with many, as you know, elected officials who have such high integrity. I am also very pleased, as I sat here listening to you, you confirmed everything that I already knew about James Hahn, so therefore, there was all very little left for me to really say. I'm very pleased. My real pet that Mayor Hahn worked on was the neighborhood councils, and someone mentioned that, but it was under him that we really worked, and I was on that commission, and he was very supportive of that commission, and I urge your yes vote. Thank you.
The McCosker Brothers.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim McCosker. Counsel, thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. My councilman spoke very beautifully. I can't add anything to Joe Buscaino's comments about Mayor Hahn, Judge Hahn. I'm very gratified to have heard the beautiful comments by Councilman Cardenas and Councilman Alakon at the committee, and to sit here and listen to the speeches from folks who have worked so closely with comptroller and city attorney and mayor and Judge Jim Hahn. There's really nothing I can add to your beautiful sentiments, so it's very humbling, and I thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Morning, council members. Pat McCosker, president, united firefighters of Los Angeles City. I want to thank all of you for the comments that I've already heard on this motion. I want to say, I know that this has been contemplated probably in the first place because of Jim's work as a comptroller and the city attorney, but I want to say that we rank-and-file firefighters believe that the fact that our headquarters is now in his old office on the 18th floor of City Hall East is probably as good a reason as any to name the building in his honor. Nobody ever did more for the fire department. Appreciate the comments of new councilmember Buscaino regarding public safety and what he did for the police department. He really did, as Paul Kokorian said, all that for the fire department and more. He added an ambulance to every fire station in the city, approximately doubling the number of ambulances, put a paramedic in every fire station in the city, put lifesaving firefighters back on truck companies when we were dangerously understaffed. We had one of those firefighters save another firefighter's life not long after he put him back. Those paramedics are saving lives right now, and they'll be saving lives 100 years from now. Many of you helped in that effort. You are lifesavers. Jim Hahn is a lifesaver. Please name this building in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Butcher, Cheryl Perizzi, Sean Murphy.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. I'm Cheryl Perizzi. I'm here on behalf of the Coalition of L.A. City Unions, representing 22,000 rank-and-file workers who proudly serve this city every day. It's fitting that we stand here in support of naming City Hall East on behalf of Mayor James K. Hahn, because every day, his 24 years of service to the city evinced tremendous respect and admiration for virtually all city employees and the services that they provided, and in his quiet and most effective style of leadership, demonstrated this in so many ways. I just have a few personal recollections that I would like to share. When he was city attorney, formed an incredibly effective unit of attorneys working on domestic violence. It really changed the way cases of domestic violence were prosecuted. He used those attorneys to then reach out to us, to the unions, to say, "We need to develop a policy on domestic violence to support city workers who are victims of domestic violence," and worked with us closely, initially to develop a policy for his office, and then ultimately that became citywide policy. Another memory is after 9/11. Those of you may recall that he was stuck outside of the city on 9/11, but the story is that immediately, as soon as he could get phone connection, began to direct a careful fiscal management of this city so that we did not see chaos in the ensuing financial downturn that occurred after that great tragedy. He was effective, quiet, understood how the city operated, and did that on behalf of all of us.
He sure did. Thank you so much, Cheryl. I appreciate that. Sean Murphy's the last speaker in City Hall.
Can I speak on behalf of Julie Butcher and David Sanders from SEIU?
Fill out a card afterwards. Thank you, Dave.
All right, thank you.
Dave, you can do it, Dave.
I'm sorry, misunderstood.
But watch out, Sean's right behind you. He may get you.
I speak on behalf of my predecessor, Julie Butcher, at SEIU Local 721. We strongly support the motion. Not only we support it, if we could, we'd help put the first stencil on the door, and again, we do support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sean Murphy. Very good, Dave. That's a good speech.
I changed my mind. I'm for this item. He should be named. If we can name one of the streets one day, Tom Bradley Boulevard.
Thank you very much, Sean. In the valley, we go to Donna Perman. Donna, come in, please. Van Nuys City Hall.
Okay. Anyway, I support this measure. It's better than John Ferraro, but we need to put the City Hall East after the James K. Hahn, otherwise it looks like the whole building. So, it should be James K. Hahn City Hall East, and let's have Eric Garcetti horseshoe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That completes public comment. I just wanted to say from the chair, I've known the Hahn family when I started working at a print shop on South Vermont. The first person, the printer Alan Wright told me about was his dad, Kenneth Hahn, and meeting the Hahn family was very, very important. But I don't want to interrupt for a second speaker. Joe?
If I may, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm working with Tim McCosker to ensure no taxpayer money is spent on the renaming of the City Hall East, so Tim's working diligently on raising money and through private fundraising efforts. And just to let you know, colleagues, the unveiling of this will take place sometime in the spring, so once we get that official date, we'll invite the community as well as the city council and business labor, the mayor's office as well. So, thank you, Mr. President.
And then I'll save my speech for that time, because I want to make sure everybody hears it. Let's see if we can vote on it right now. All right. Jim Hahn is a great man. He has a great sister, Janice Hahn. They had great parents, Kenneth and Ramona Hahn. God bless the Hahn family. Madam Clerk, let's put this item in front of us. Would you open the roll on this item? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
14 ayes.
14 ayes, fourth with on this item. Let's give Jim Hahn a big hand, and all those city employees who work with him in the city comptroller's office, city attorney's office, and mayor's office. Very good job. Next item.
Item 19, called special by Councilmember Kokorian.
Mr. Kokorian.
What else? You got a pass?
Reconsider item number three real quick. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote on reconsideration.
14 ayes.
14 ayes. All right, item three's in front of us.
You have a card?
No, we have, no, let's go. Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, no, on item three?
Item three. You're good? Everybody's okay with item three? Yeah, we have comment cards on item three, so we reconsider it. Vice of the city attorney. And so we have Damon, Damon Daines, is that correct? Come forward, please. Mr. Durden, that's correct, and Norma Schaefer. Thank you. Item number three.
Item number three. My name is Sasa Durden, and I'm here to protest the charges against me and my property, and I'd like to know what is the problem.
We're going to have someone from Building and Safety here on this item here. We're going to have a VAC meet this gentleman at the rope. He wants to know an explanation, if we could. We'll have staff meet you at the rope, sir, right over there by the city police officer, sergeant of arms. Next speaker. Norma Schaefer.
Hi. Yeah, I'm here because I'm trying to get a full understanding as to what you guys are getting ready to do here on the dispensaries. I have...
This is not on this item right here.
It's not? This is what we were told to fill out.
Hold the time for one moment, please.
Item three is regarding hearing protests for a lien on 10321 South Stanford Avenue.
Thank you very much. This is on a hearing on that property. Thank you so much. Is there any other public comment cards on this item? Is Building and Safety here on this All right, we're going to vote on this item right now, and the Department of Building and Safety will be contacting Mr. Darden. We're going to hold it on the desk. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that right now. Just let's hold that on the desk. Now, let's get back and get right here. What's the next item before us, Madam Clerk?
Item 19, called special by Councilmember Kokorian.
Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I needed to call this special because I need to recuse myself from this vote for the reason that I own a residence in the impacted area.
Thank you. Do you have to leave the chambers?
I do.
Continue your fine work at your office, and then when this is done, please return. All right, on this item here, Mr. Reyes. How many cards do we have on this item?
Okay, well, let's hear the public comment, if you don't mind. Chair Plum, we can listen to the public comment.
Was there public comment in Plum? No public comment?
No.
All right, so two-minute per card. We're going to call the names, if you could come up here. Ronan Brown, Linda Clark, Fred Mieszewski, if that's correct. Please, state your name for the record at the microphone.
Good morning, council members. I'm against the Studio City overlay because it's going against the will of the people. You know, we're hearing about Jim Hahn keeping the city together. This kind of proposal that's going on in Studio City and some other districts will actually tear the city apart. It's imposing against the will of the majority of the people restriction and taking away rights. The BMO that passed about four years ago is a wonderful piece of legislation. It's taking care of the city look in... It's taking care of the city look in globality of the city. It specifically requires 75% support of the people in a specific neighborhood to make any change to this global ordinance. There is a glitch that allows council people to bring overlay proposal that's going against the will of the people. We're asking you not to just rubber stamp this. Send it back. There is a primaries coming up. Why not to put it on the ballot and get the real votes from the people, the owner of the properties, that live in the neighborhood, what they actually want, and if they're ready to take away their own property rights and other people's property rights? If it's the majority of the people, I will be for it. But it's going against the will of the majority. There is other proposal in the city, one in Studio City, the other one in Paul Corret's district in Beverly Grove. It's against the majority, and it's wrong. And I'm asking you to take it in consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Do I start?
Yeah, Linda Clark, go ahead, please.
Okay, Linda Clark. So here are some facts I'd like you to consider as you... I hope you vote no on the RFA. So the RFA initiative started before L.A. citywide BMO was enacted. The BMO should supersede or replace the RFA, yet it continues. Fact, the RFA is limited to 3,900 Studio City homes in the flat part of the neighborhood because it's too hard to apply the RFA to the hillside homes. So my question is, when will it ever be easy to apply it to them? Are we to be the only L.A. neighborhood subject to this in perpetuity? The RFA is patently unfair. Fact, when L.A. planning staff had a public awareness session at the Studio City Library, they advertised it to the 3,900 homeowners using a couple of postcards. When the 3,900 homeowners were able to see the facts, they overwhelmingly voted against the RFA with pushpins. None of us wants mansions, but we don't think the RFA makes sense. However, instead of dropping the RFA, the L.A. planners persist in this effort and then want to work with us toward a compromise. But I don't see the point of a compromise when 70% plus of the residents don't want this. But in any event, they didn't widely publicize the public notices for the compromise sessions, even though they collected email addresses at the Studio City Library outreach event. And they continued only to work with a very small group of RFA supporters, and they're basically shutting us out. There should be an option to have no RFA. So Mr. Krikorian, at one point, said that it's too expensive to have put this to a vote. I would say, given that it's illegal, because it's not continuous parcels, I would say it's too expensive for L.A. city to have a lawsuit over this, when we'd rather have longer library hours and more park services.
Thank you.
Fred Muzuski. I am opposed to the RFA. In a time where the city is in dire straits for cash, this is going to lessen the revenue to the city. This is going to lessen jobs where people really need to be employed right now. It's not a time to do this. Maybe some other time, but not at this point in time. Not when the money's tight, not when jobs are tight, not when people need to work, not when the city needs money. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Ron Ray. Douglas Humphries. I want to say it correctly. Offer Brick. Thank you.
I'm Ron Roy. I am a homeowner in Studio City, and I own multiple businesses in California. For the past few years, our beautiful and serene community of Studio City has literally been ripped apart. Peaceful community meetings have turned into screaming confrontations bordering on physical violence. And the council today is about to make this far, far worse. The reason? A minority of special interest political activists have tried to ramrod the Studio City RFA down the throats of homeowners with calculated misinformation and outright confusion against the will of the majority. It is improperly drawn up. It is unfair. It circumvents the will of the people, and it is discriminatory. Legitimate RFAs require the backing of a supermajority of 75% of homeowners, and yet these political elitists have never been able to produce solid evidence of any majority at all. Why? Because the majority of open-minded Studio City property owners are firmly opposed to this. Most telling, the Studio City Chamber of Commerce has even publicly opposed the RFA and endorsed the BMO. Even the L.A. City Planning Commission recognized this, stating that at official meetings, quote, "70% of attendees were against the RFA," and that, most importantly, quote, "it wasn't fully and properly vetted." Furthermore, the city attorney has stated that this RFA can be challenged, resulting in, quote, "expensive and time-consuming lawsuits against Los Angeles." This RFA can easily be struck down in court. It doesn't meet the legal contiguous requirements, has denied homeowners of due process, and involves political conflict of interest. It's bad legislation which will be aggressively challenged and litigated. Today, this council can rise above the politics, heal our community, and save L.A. possibly millions of dollars in costly litigation by saying no to this poorly drafted, discriminatory, and ramrodded RFA. Please vote against the RFA. Thank you.
Ron Roy. Is that Ron Roy, right?
That is Ron Roy.
Antoinette Brick, I called. Excuse me, Antoinette. And Douglas Humphries, followed.
Any first?
Yes, Antoinette. Douglas would want it that way.
A handout should have been passed on to you. Good morning. My name is Antoinette Brick. I'm a homeowner in Studio City against a proposal. The planning department claims that the majority of homeowners are in favor of the RFA. The planning department's staff report indicates that approximately 700 out of 3,900 homes, or roughly 18% of the stakeholders in Studio City, are in favor of the RFA. In the planning department's own published words at the time that the BMO was developed, it is the intent of the BMO to allow RFA districts only where the majority or supermajority, 75% of homeowners, were in favor of the RFA district, and where the RFA district included only a single contiguous neighborhood. 18% is not a majority, and the 18% that the planning department cites in the staff report derived from the 15 non-contiguous neighborhoods illegally stitched together. LAMC Section 13.13b also states that precise boundaries are required at the time of application for the initiation of the individual district. There's no public record of the city council approving or initiating Wendy Gruehl's motion that the planning department states initiated the Studio City RFA ordinance. The city planning department falsely stipulated to the planning commission that the motion had been initiated, then created, and delivered a proposed ordinance to the planning commission without any legal authority to do so. And the planning commission, in turn, deliberated and arrived at a recommendation again without any legal authority to do so. The citizens of Los Angeles have been denied due process of the law. Moreover, Wendy Gruehl's motion presented a clear conflict of interest as the motion violated state conflict of interest laws. Please see the handouts that the council secretary should have handed each of you for additional detailing of the never-initiated motion and Wendy Gruehl's conflict of interest issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we have Douglas Humphries.
Hi, my name's Doug Humphries. I'm an architect. I know Councilman Krikorian thinks the compromised RFA is good, but it really doesn't preserve the existing character. I do agree with the previous comments, and I'm here more as an architect than as a homeowner. My family's owned our two-story home since 1958, and it's one of the few original two-story homes in the Colfax Meadows area. I'm trying to prevent more badly-written ordinances, such as the hillside and retaining-wall ordinances, that were generated by mob mentality that will inhibit the quality of architectural design as well as property rights. The group opposed... There's one particular issue in this thing that I'm trying to bring up, as the other people are taking care of other things. But the group opposed to the... The People for RFA have a point of view of opposing balconies, and the way the RFA is written, the balconies are limited in a certain way that it's going to affect architectural history, in a sense. It's the portion on the balconies is written from a point of view of infringement of privacy, which is really something within an individual homeowner's own control through the use of planting, screening, and window treatments at the expense of others' architectural property rights and aesthetic values, and architectural and historic design traditions. Restricting balconies only provides a false sense of privacy. I was told that just the presence of a balcony caused a-
Finish your sentence.
-a psychological feeling of loss of privacy.
Thank you, Mr. Humphries. Now I call the name Offer Brick.
My name's Offer Brick, and I'm a homeowner in Studio City. Please refer to the map that the city clerk should have handed each of you by now. Three houses are spotlighted on the map as an example. All three are part of the Sherman Oaks, Studio City, Toluca Lake, Wengah Pass community plan. Despite the stated goals of the community plan, the planning department has arbitrarily and capriciously specified boundaries for a Studio City RFA district dividing contiguous neighborhoods and at the same time stitching together 15 non-contiguous neighborhoods into one, in violation of LAMC Section 13.3 and Objective 1-1.6 and 1-3 of the community plan. On the map, House Number One and Number Two are across the street from each other in the same contiguous neighborhood. But the planning department says that they are in different neighborhoods, and so House Number One deserves the BMO and House Number Two deserves the RFA. House Number Two and Number Three are four miles apart in completely different non-contiguous neighborhoods with very different parcel characteristics in neighborhoods with completely different character, yet they'll both be part of this RFA. To get from House Number Two to Number Three, you'd have to walk one hour and hop over non-R1 and non-Re-zoned parcels, zoned commercial, industrial, R3, R4, and hillside zones. But the planning department says that House Number Two and Number Three, that are four miles away from each other, are in the same contiguous neighborhood. And House Number One and Number Two, which are only 60 feet apart, are in different non-contiguous neighborhoods. Using the planning department's unpublished definition of the word contiguous, neighborhoods in East L.A. or Westwood would all be defined as contiguous with Studio City. The planning department has disingenuously made a farce out of the word contiguous and has never published any rules for contiguity, and claims that contiguous neighborhoods are non-contiguous and non-contiguous neighborhoods contiguous. This disingenuous farce of the planning department plays out thousands of times in many other similar examples on the map. The proposed RFA district is arbitrary and capricious, non-contiguous, divides neighborhoods, and destroys the existing community plan consistency and the integrity of neighborhoods.
Thank you so much. I want to say it correctly. Hindi Lone, is that correct? Followed by Alan Drummond and Lisa Sarkin completes the cards.
It is Henry Long. I'm a resident in Studio City on Laurel Grove Avenue. And I'd like to just briefly speak about the fairness of this, the RFA. As I am, many of my neighbors are, the values in Studio City have taken a hit recently, and the unfairness of the RFA in its market influence compared to the BMO is significant. Why should people who, right now, may be underwater or right at value with their loan, be unfairly punished and limited? As you may know, if you've driven through the area, there are many homes that are older. And one of the principal arguments in the RFA is that homes are being... McMansions are taking the place of the older classic homes. The truth is that the market forces driving the construction and the gentrification in the area are consuming some of these homes, but without them, the neighborhood would be falling into disrepair, and the overall values would be going down as a whole. So if we institute the RFA, we drive down the ability for the market to actually gentrify, to claim some of these properties. Yes, there are going to be some McMansions, but if you drive through the area, there are also a lot of very tasteful homes. And I think that's an acceptable price to pay to allow the market to stipulate the prices. So in the interest of fairness, I would ask that you reject the RFA. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mr. President, council. My name is Alan Diamond. I'm the president of the Studio City Residents Association, and we represent over 1,000 households in and about Studio City. What you have before you here today is the culmination of something that's been going on since 2008. Four years of work has got into this. When we first proposed this, there was opposition, and there was a lot of input from the other side. Finally, after many meetings, we met with the developers, the realtors in Studio City, listened to their concerns. We realized they had valid points to make. The planning department worked as well. They realized that we did have to have public hearings, which were held. Everybody had their chance to say what they had to say. We finally boiled this down to two sticking points of why we couldn't reach a compromise. Finally, we did reach the compromise with work with planning and the council office, who worked with us very closely on bringing this to a closure. And finally, we did have a document that would work, and everybody signed off on. We did meet the opposition. We worked with the opposition. We heard their concerns. They were listened to. We made changes. What you have here today is a compromise that everybody can live with. Some people still disagree with all the hard work we put in. They weren't around when I was around, working with them. Perhaps one of these gentlemen I had conversations with. But basically, what you have before here today is a valid exercise of everybody's exercise of their rights to be heard have been heard, and what you have here has reached due properly. It's been due process. Nobody's been excluded. And if they haven't been heard, all I can say is they didn't step up soon enough, which just made their concerns known. But they were represented by this other group that we met with, and we did. So I would urge you, gentlemen and lady, to please pass this, put it to rest, and please, can we move on? Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Sarkin. Thank you, Mr. Diamond.
Good afternoon, I mean, good morning, everyone. Lisa Sarkin, Studio City Neighborhood Council. I'm the vice president. I'm also the chair of the Lanius Committee, and I'm representing the Studio City Neighborhood Council today. This process has been in the works since 2005, actually. During a meeting in 2008 with council member Gruehl, planning director Goldberg, and several others, Ms. Goldberg gave those representing Studio City and a choice of two ways to achieve our goals. The RFA was chosen, and by all, and the planning department began writing the Studio City residential floor area ordinance. This is an important process for Studio City stakeholders preserving our community's identity. When the BMO took effect, the houses became larger. We went from approximately 52% of the lot usage to 60. All of the houses that have been built recently are 60%. The BMO allows for an RFA. That was a compromise that was made at that time so that each individual neighborhood could decide what they want, which is exactly what we did. We followed exactly the process that all the different departments told us to do. Please give Studio City this important tool and send it to the mayor forthwith. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That completes our public comment. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, council president. Can I have the staff that's here on this case come to the center table? We have the planning department and the city attorney's staff. Colleagues, I try to keep it succinct as possible with specific questions, and I do know that Councilmember Krikorian had recused himself on this issue. So can you please tell me, how long have you been working on this effort? And in the answer, the number of meetings you've had that have engaged the stakeholders in this process? Can be as short as possible, because we've got six minutes, and I want to cover a lot of ground here.
Okay. Thank you, councilman. Tom Glick, City Planning Department. We began this effort in the winter of 2009. We brought this to Planning Commission on two occasions. We went through several public processes, including three neighborhood council meetings, workshops. Planning Commission held their first hearing and directed us to hold more workshops, which we did in the winter of 2010. And we held a series of workshops before we went back to Planning Commission in July. Planning Commission again heard a compromised RFA, a revised RFA by staff, in July of 2010, and revised and recommended that be adopted by city council, and their report came out in September of 2010. When the September 2010 report was issued, the council office picked up the banner and proceeded to work with both sides, because there were two sides on this issue, for the next year, at least 20 meetings with the community. next year, at least 20 meetings with the community on reaching a further compromise that's before you today.
And all this work, and give me a ballpark figure of how many public meetings were held in totality?
Probably, including these, with Council, 11 to 12.
So the work that has unfolded was done purposefully so that there will be no surprises to the property owners?
No. The community, once Commission heard this, and the communities came out in February of 2010, the communities on both sides were very versed on this issue.
And this work is done under the umbrella that was directed by the Director of Planning?
Yes.
So that allowed us to cover, how am I going to put this, the legal process that allows us to engage the public in dealing with this special use district?
Yeah. Kevin Keller, City Planning. I'm the senior planner for the Valley, Central, and West Policy Divisions. There was a question raised as to the initiation of this item, and just for the record, the City Council, City Planning Commission, or Director of Planning can initiate this type of work. The Planning Department, through its actions with staff, has initiated this work before you today, so I just want to put that on the record today. Thank you.
And that covers the supplemental use district, to be specific?
Correct.
Okay. Now, when we look at the residential floor area and we hear the letters BMO, can you just describe both of those concepts?
Okay. I can take it. When the city adopted the baseline mansionization ordinance, they allowed for an RFA or a residential floor area, it was put in the code under 1232-S, to allow communities to actually have RFA or tailor-made processes within their communities, either more restrictive or less. In the Studio City case, the Studio City residents wanted to see a RFA that was more restrictive than what baseline mansionization had proposed or had adopted. So when Council adopted BMO, they allowed the process, the RFA process, to be a supplemental use district.
Does this take away, let me put it this way, does this allow for an enhanced quality of life, given the level of discretion that's being allowed by this supplemental use district?
Yes, and in fact, the original supplemental use district was just a straight reduction. The one that went to Planning Commission in February of 2010 was a straight reduction of 10% above what BMO had proposed. What the community and the compromise ended up coming with was bonuses. So in other words, you could get back up through architectural bonuses and architectural and green building ordinance issues, but 10 bonuses or 11 bonuses were added into the compromise that give the community or the development community an ability to get back up to what baseline essentially has now.
So bottom line, when you look at the nature and quality of the structures that are being allowed by this umbrella, this supplemental use district, we're not taking away any rights. What we're doing is we're creating incentives to enhance the structures if they want to get the maximum amount of floor area in their building. Would that be accurate?
That would be completely accurate.
Now, again, just to respond to some of the comments, the notion of contiguous and non-contiguous and impacted areas, can you speak to that item?
Yes. When we came to Council for this first hearing of this item in September of 2011, one of the comments, the only speaker, one of two speakers brought up the fact that we worked on this RFA illegally. Section 1232-S of the code talks about how it should be initiated, and it also talks about what are the requirements. And the applicant claimed, or the appellant or the person who argued it, claimed that we violated the RFA because it did not include contiguous parcels, that parts of the RFA were north of Ventura, south of Ventura Boulevard in the hillside areas, but they were considered flat. And then we had other portions that were south or north of Ventura Boulevard in the flatlands of Studio City. And that was his contention, that they weren't contiguous. When we reread the code, we looked at the map. We looked at what contiguous actually is defined as, is two or more parcels adjacent to each other, and we found one case where the mapping was incorrect, which is the Oakwood School at Magnolia and the 170 freeway. So part of our recommendation is that parcel be removed from this RFA.
So we're correcting the inconsistencies?
Yes, we are.
Mr. City Attorney, anything else we should add for the record?
No, I believe that everything's been covered, including the fact that, I believe that it had been mentioned by one of the speakers that the only way to initiate would be by a 75% vote of the homeowners. Well, that's just one of the ways. You can also do it by council motion and by the Director of Planning. Just wanted to clarify that.
So the process that's in front of us has engaged the law in its totality? We followed all the procedures that's before this body to allow us for this legitimate vote?
Yes, I believe we've done it actually probably two different ways. Director of Planning, and I believe there was a council motion, you know, that was intended to be passed.
Okay. So colleagues, I went through this question and answer for the record so that we can move forward on this vote and have established the facts as they have been told and unveiled throughout the process. It's a three-year body of work. Yes, it is very controversial. It is very emotional, but I feel we have done everything we could to extend possible. Anything else you want to add before we ask for the vote?
Yes, Councilman, I do want to add one more thing. When we went to Commission in February of 2010, we had two definitive sides on this. There were those opposed and those supporting the RFA. It was approximately 150 on each side. It was a large meeting. What you see here now is a remnants of those who are in opposition to this. The Council Office, and I'm going to give them credit even though they've accused themselves, have done a magnificent job of bringing both sides together into a support of a single ordinance. Most of the development community is in support of this despite what the speakers have said today.
Considering the hard work from the Council Office, the staff, and the City Attorney's due diligence, I want to recommend a yes vote and move this forward.
Then go on that too, and also the Neighborhood Council supports this as well as the Neighborhood Association. Is that the record be stated? So is that all very active?
Yes. We have letters on record from the Homeowners Association and the Neighborhood Council supporting the RFA.
Right. Mr. Alakon?
Councilmembers, I rise just to clarify something that was inferred by the last presenter when he said the Council Office has recused itself. The Council Office has not recused itself. There's nothing to prohibit the Council Office from working with the community. It is the Council member who recused himself, so I didn't want to give the impression that somebody did something that was incorrect out there.
Very good point, Mr. Alakon. Very good. So there's no other speakers on the queue. Mr. Reyes, thank you for your work in plum. Thank everyone for coming down to the public comment. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Very good. Let's move forward on that. Mr. Corretts?
Can we have that more moved forward forthwith?
Forthwith. Forthwith. Such order. Next item, I'm taking it out of Order 22. We have a lot of fine Los Angeles police officers. Commander Cho is here. We have one public comment card. John Walsh.
Of course, we always support the Police Department. They're doing an excellent job in making sure that undocumented workers are on the street running us over. Keep doing it. Most of them have left. It's lunch hour for the LAPD. This issue, which is Item 22, and incidentally, I do not have any dirty words on my clothes or on my chest.
Mr. Walsh, it's okay. Mr. Walsh, address the chair, please.
I'm trying to sneak a dirty word onto my clothes. You see, I don't have anything on my clothes. I'll strip naked if you want. Now, this is 22. You already gave them their revolver club. You gave them money so they can aim at us. And this is Item 22, subject to the provocation. This has to do with underwater nuclear devices. And incidentally, if they catch a terrorist with an underwater nuclear device, they will ask that terrorist if they're a citizen, and if they say they have no ID, they will impound the nuclear device and allow a citizen from another country, maybe Iraq, who knows, Yemen, they'll allow them to leave because the LAPD is very, very politically correct. Not the officers themselves, the head of the LAPD, Beck. HollywoodHighlands.org. Come to our website. Long live anti-terrorism. HollywoodHighlands.org. Take your eight seconds back.
Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Mr. Englander.
We have a lot of our police officers here and port police officers, and let them know that, you know, this is one of the largest ports in the entire country with, what, 42, 43% of all the goods that come into this country through the joint ports of Los Angeles and San Pedro. And we haven't had any major incidents there because we have the best trained department. They go after these UAWI grants, which are critically important for homeland security. They do a phenomenal job, working tirelessly, putting themselves on the front line, and I want to recognize our officers, the best officers that we have with LAPD and our port police, and say thank you. We truly appreciate it. This grant is critically important to have this new technology there as well and protect that front, which is, by the way, a huge financial benefit and critical economic engine here to the city of Los Angeles. So thank you very much for bringing that up.
Mr. Englander, thank you very much. Thank the commander, the captains, and the officers very much. There's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Forthwith. So ordered. Thank you very much. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, there's a request to continue Item 3 to February 17.
Okay. No objection. So ordered. Next item.
Item 20, called Special by Councilmember Perry and for cards.
Ms. Perry, what's your pleasure? You want to make the presentation first?
Yeah, just very quickly, unless people have questions. I just wanted to thank John McCree and the Department of Recreation and Parks for their efforts on reimagining the south lawn. We had already done a bit of planning to bring drought-tolerant plants to the north lawn, which unfortunately had to be put on hold for a bit, but I think we can take this situation and look at it as a good opportunity to incorporate the south lawn into that plan. So to Mr. McCree and all of your staff and everybody who's been supportive from the Department and the CLA, thank you for the outreach in particular that you have done in going to the Neighborhood Council in the area, hosting meetings with landscape architects, and establishing a website so that people all over the city had an opportunity to look at the design options and comment on that. I think you've done a very good job in balancing the direction that our city needs to go with drought-tolerant landscaping and the fact that this is a historic space, that we host untold numbers of events each year. This project is no small feat, and I know many of the staff members spent their evenings and their weekends working on it. And thank you to Mike Scholl and to Tom Gibson, Robert Oyakawa, Ramon Barajas, Javier Solis, and Richard Fisher, and everyone else who helped. And I look forward to the day when we open the north lawn and the south lawn. So I know we have cards, Mr. Chair.
We sure do.
Okay. So members have questions, the staff is here to answer them.
Can I just add the public comment real quick on this? Ms. Dodson, is that correct? John Walsh, Dr. Williams, and Armin Nadorian. Come on in line up right now. We'll get you all together. Mr. Walsh, go first.
You're doing a very good job, much better than Eric. I'm giving you an A-, Tom.
I want to give you an A, John, but you got to get your haircut. Next.
Okay. And when I get it, it's at the 99 cent only store. That's where I got my haircut. HollywoodHighlands.org, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. Well, you know, Little Ricky Garcetti, he's not here, he's fundraising, so he's not here. But he's the one who said, "Stay as long as you need to, to the occupiers." So, you know, Little Ricky has, from his family, his mother, a huge nonprofit organization. Now, he's funneling money to his campaign, so why doesn't he funnel money from his mother's nonprofit to pay the city for all the damage that we did? Now, we can't help that we did the damage. It's not our fault. Why should the city pay for it when Little Ricky is going around to the Occupy people and saying, "Vote for me, I gave you the city park." And now we pay essentially indirectly for the restoration of the city park, and the whole city park thing was Little Ricky's campaign thing. Because this election is going to be won by people, not 80-year-old people or 68-year-old people like me with arthritis. It's going to be won by people under 40, and that's what Little Ricky is going after. So I don't know where Little Ricky is now, you know, but I'm sure he's getting a big check wherever he is. He can smell money. Both of us are half-Jewish, and you know, if you're Jewish, you can smell.
Mr. President.
HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right. Now, next, Mr. Dr. Williams.
Dr. Tom Williams, El Sereno, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, also fix El Sereno parks. We've already done this in El Sereno Recreation Center. We put in 500 cubic yards of mulch, and it did very well this year with the cooperation of Rec and Park and Bureau Sanitation. We all did it together, about 25 people, did about two to three hours each, and moved 500 cubic yards and protected bare ground. You got bare ground here. So I would highly recommend low-impact development or just mulching it. You have the mulch free. You have to pay the diesel to get the trucks there and to spread it. If you want, some of us will come and help you spread it. Low impact, actually better impact for us and for the runoff that you used to have to irrigate, and it always ran off onto the sidewalks because the irrigation wasn't kept up. So we're quite proud of what we've already done in El Sereno, and we'd like to see it done at City Hall Park. And by the way, there was another park. It was called People's Park. Maybe you should consider changing the name to Occupy Park. Thank you.
Ah, Dr. Williams, thank you. Snowdy Dodd, California Native Plant Society.
Yes, I'm here to represent the California Native Plant Society and the Theater of Pain Foundation, and I'm here to support the Reckon Parks Preferred Plan for City Hall Park, as I understand it and I have seen, because that plan has at least 50% native plants in it and reduces turf by 51%. Natives in our parks are compelling because they lose, they use less water, they use less pesticide, they use no fertilizer. They also could create food and habitat for native birds, native butterflies, and other pollinators, and bring a bit of nature into the park for our urban dwellers to appreciate and to be able to see. Right now in the park, I understand the wildlife, besides humans, are rats and pigeons. I would like to see hummingbirds. I would like to see something more natural here in our park. Urban dwellers deserve that kind of break, just like people out in the valley and other non-urban areas do too. Also, the native plants would reflect what we see in the Hollywood Hills, like the toyons and the sages, and be beautiful and something that we could be proud of. So I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to have input into this whole process. It has been very collaborative, and Reckon Parks are great people to work with. So thank you so much.
That's very nice. Thank you so much. Mr. McCree, just a brief little comment on all of this and give us, I think we have a few speakers.
Thank you, Councilmember Barnes.
Hold on a second, please. I made a mistake. Mr. Najarian, did you want to speak as well? I'm sorry, Mr. McCree. Donna Perriman afterwards, and that's it.
Respectable seats, Councilmember. Dear fellow Angelen, actually, I endorse with item, with the resolution 20... Actually, I endorse with item, with the resolution 20, the resolution that devoted to restoration of City Hall Park. When I see that City Hall Park actually fenced off by large fences and concrete slabs, you know, actually, and I believe that been, I'm fairly, you know, closed off, taken from a public because actually, there is no reason, you know, to keep this City Hall Park, you know, fenced off right now. Since, but actually, it's the only reason that the city pursues was large fences and concrete slabs at City Hall Park, you know, is that to keep off the members of Occupy L.A. movement from occupying it again. But it's, I believe, a successive measure, and I demand those concrete slabs and metal fence be removed from Los Angeles City Hall Park, you know, in order to open it to, you know, to development, to restoration, and to low-impact development like planting flowers and bushes where, and actually, that would be one great way to embellish our city. Because otherwise, it looks like it's been a political measure trying to, to actually repression measure, trying to repress those members of Los Angeles Occupy L.A. movement from coming again to that City Hall lawn, you know. And, but actually, that needs to be done, and I believe that actually doesn't give City of Los Angeles actually a good grade, you know, to, you know, to keep such repression measures like those fence, you know, metal fences with scary signs, you know, that prevent people, you know, to, okay.
Thank you very much, Van Nuys, Donna. Donna Perman.
I didn't realize, sorry, what City Hall Park was. Let the city council pay for it out of the pocket. They decide Occupy should be there, especially Mr. Garcetti, who says, "Stay as long as you want." So, you need to pay for it. But I agree with the lady, I'd like to bring into the park, I'd like to bring butterflies, fireflies, hummingbirds, and moths, and I wanted to bring appropriate plants for them. And that's all I'm going to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, there's no public comment cards, that's complete public comment.
Thank you, Councilmember LeBonds. First off, I want to thank Councilmember Perry. Her staff was instrumental at every meeting along the way. I want to thank the mayor's staff. As you know, we began to look at City Hall Park long before Occupy L.A. came, and we had plans to do some renovations to the North Lawn. Years before that, through Ramon Barajas and Danaveldes, we replaced all the irrigation systems. So, we were ahead of the game. We can debate Occupy L.A. all we want, but it's given us an opportunity now to relook at City Hall Park, its historical nature, redo the landscaping to the way that it should be in the 21st century. I want to thank my staff, Mike Scholl, Ramon Barajas, Tom Gibson, and all. They've just done a tremendous job, meeting with the community. We have consensus on a plan. It's a good plan. And I hope that as we go through the demonstration and the slides, that you have questions on this and other things we're doing in our park system. Thank you.
So, do you want to roll, Mike Scholl, real quick?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Mike Scholl, Superintendent of Planning, Construction, and Maintenance for Reckon Parks. We have a presentation to go through today, but let me first begin by talking about some of the damage that was done and the cost of that associated with that damage. The obvious damages was done to the turf, which again is the most obvious. We had minor damage to the irrigation systems and electrical infrastructure, as well as graffiti to the Flint Fountain and to the walls of City Hall. Outside of the cost of the graffiti, the estimate to put the lawn back and restore it is approximately $76,000. That's if we did basically it back to the original condition. It's worth noting that that's considerably less than what we had originally reported, mainly because we assumed the worst-case scenario for the irrigation systems and thinking that we may have to replace all of that. So, that's why there's a big difference in the cost. Luckily, the irrigation systems are fairly intact, and we've already done many of the As we begin the presentation, you'll hear that, you know, the common theme of a lot of this is water conservation. It doesn't matter if you're talking about the low-income development ordinance that was recently adopted by this council, or the state's model landscape ordinance, all of which we've taken into account as we began to look at what we do here. Prior to any one of these measures coming into effect, Reckon Parks began in the year 2007 looking at technology that could reduce our water use throughout the park system. And it's worth noting that City Hall was already, three years ago, had already been equipped with such technology, which is a basic, it's called an ET, Smart Irrigation Controller. Essentially, what it does is it lays back the amount of water that evaporates through the air, it takes into account things like soil temperature, soil moisture, plant type, soil gradients, and so on and so forth. That allows us to only irrigate when needed. The result of that is already a reduction in water of approximately 20%. We've equipped the park system, I think we're about halfway through that program to equip all of our irrigation controllers, more than 1,000 of them throughout the park system with this technology. As we began to look further at the, you know, our water conservation measures, we did, back in 2007, with, and there was a severe drought in Los Angeles that resulted in the lowest precipitation rates on recorded history. The mayor established the Emergency Water Conservation Plan, which spurred us into looking at our own systems to see how we could reduce our water throughout the city. Because we're probably, if not the largest, next to the highest largest water user in the city of Los Angeles. As a result of that, we began, and if you look at the slide in the report just before, you begin to see a graph that dictates our water use throughout the park system. And it's, we're really proud of the fact that this is, and unfortunately, it's not widely known, of the amount of water that we've been able to save. So, the graph represents our water usage in billions of gallons of water from 2005 through the current, actually, to the end of 2011. This is by calendar year, not fiscal year. And you'll also see a blue line that goes through the graph, that represents the increase in park acreage. So, in 2007, you see a severe spike, that was a result of the drought and our water use. But since then, we've taken a dramatic reduction in our water use, which amounts to more than a billion gallons of water since 2007. That also represents about 35% reduction in water use throughout the park system while increasing our park acreage by more than 600 acres. If you look, put that in terms of households in Southern California, you're looking at approximately the same amount of water that 10,000 homes would use in Southern California. So, we're very proud of that. One of the things that we didn't achieve through our plan is putting it, although we were doing what we're going, what we're doing, what we're going to show you at City Hall, we've been doing it throughout the park system, but we didn't really do it in a prominent location. So, this is really that opportunity to allow us to further educate the community in one of the most civic, largest civic icons buildings in Southern California. We've already talked about, if you want to go to the next slide, Robert. Talked about our outreach, and thank you for the comments on that. I think we've had a very successful outreach through this, either through our website or through the Downtown Neighborhood Council. We've had a lot of input. So, I'm just going to breeze through a lot of these slides that we've already recently talked about. Thank you for the comments from the Theodore Payne Foundation, who was one of the organizations that participated voluntarily. We had a number of organizations, next slide, that participated with us at no cost to the city. And we thank all of them, they're up on the screen now, who gave their time for free to give us advice and to make sure that, basically representing a peer group to us on what we thought was the best plan for City Hall. Next slide. We had to get into, before we talk about the different options we looked about, very quickly, we, you know, it's important to note that City Hall is an historical cultural monument in the city of Los Angeles, and the things that are in these lawn areas play into that, more, some more than others. The, obviously, the fountain, the walkways, and all those are signature elements or historical defining features that, you know, towards the cultural significance of City Hall. So, all those, in conjunction with the events that happened, more than 165 events, by the way, that happened in South Lawn, had to be taken into account to come up with the right plan to redo the, to do the lawn area. Next slide. The first option, we've already talked about, that was the, basically, to put it back to what it originally was, our annual maintenance that we spend at City Hall is about $76,000. That remains unchanged. The capital cost was $76,000 to put all of the lawn area back in existing. There's obviously 0% reduction in turf underneath that original condition option. Option one, is the next slide, represents what Mr. McCree was talking about, where we had began to explore, well, actually, not began, we had already had a design, working collaboratively with the council office, Council District 9, Jan Perry's office, as well as the Bureau of Sanitation and the Bureau of Engineering, to come up with a plan to put drought tolerant native landscaping in the North Lawn area. That plan represents a reduction in turf of 25% around City Hall. The annual maintenance cost, you do start to see it go up some, and the capital cost of that option is $215,000. Option two brings us further down into City Hall, into the South Lawn area, again leaving the North Lawn, as we previously described in the last option. Basically lays out adding additional drought tolerant native landscaping gardens in the South Lawn. And you'll start to see the capital costs go up again to $390,000, and the annual maintenance cost, in our opinion, begins to rise as well. That represents a reduction in turf of 58%. Option three, which we explored, which was the most drastic of the options, which was a reduction in turf of 80%, basically removing the mass majority of the turf in and around City Hall and replacing it with decomposed granite in many of those areas. However, this option, outside of the cost, which was $540,000, these are, again, just estimates on our part, the annual maintenance cost goes up as well. We began looking at that option as, I think, the most people that we discussed this with began favoring and kind of gravitating towards option number two.
And what's the one that you're looking at?
That's preferred option, which is up before the screen right now.
That's the one we want to keep up there.
Yeah, that's the option that we'll finish on. Essentially, this is a little bit of a downscaled option to option two. Percent turf reduction is 51%. We have a capital cost of $390,000, as well as an annual maintenance cost of $135,000. And this is the option that basically provides that balanced approach, which allows all of the events to happen, as well as showing our commitment as a city to drought tolerant native landscaping in our, as it pertains to things that we're doing under the low income, under the LID ordinance and the state's landscape model, landscape model ordinance.
So, that looks real good, Michael. I think our council, we have some questions from members here that want to ask, I don't know, we got to catch some things. We have four speakers on the queue. Is that complete, basically?
Yeah, you can just quickly go through the, there's some nice renderings of what it potentially could look, well, probably what it will look like. And, you know, it's, the landscape architects did a really nice job with representing, so you can kind of see the different colors and things that you'd see out there.
Beautiful natives.
And with that, I conclude my presentation.
I appreciate that, Michael, and the whole team. Now, let me have the great councilwoman of the 9th District, Jan Perry. You spoke, you're in favor. Thank you so much. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Jan Perry, for your leadership on this. First, I want to acknowledge my Mar Vista folks who got very heavily involved in this, Sherry Akers, Melissa Stoller, Laura Bodensteiner, and the entire Mar Vista Community Council. They have taken deep interest. As you might know, in Mar Vista, we've changed a lot of our lawns. One time, I said on the council floor, "The time for your green grass is over. We are in Southern California, and we should have more native plants." And my God, my community, over 100 homes have switched to that. I did mine actually 18 years ago because it just made sense to do that in the front yard, putting up cactuses and wood chips and things that needed less water. But here's my questions for the record. Is the preferred restoration option consistent with the city's low-impact development ordinance that addresses stormwater diversion and water capture?
It is consistent. It's important to note that it's, this is actually, I mean, on the face of it, it's not, does not have to, by the law, have to comply, but we are, we are taking it to that level. We haven't finished our exploration of the stormwater capture. We obviously have some things around City Hall that will cause some barriers to us. For example, in the North Lawn, there's buried tanks that are old fuel tanks.
Sure.
Things like that. But we are going to do it in the South Lawn area, especially around the steep slopes on each side of the stairs, because that's where we get most of the runoff. And the idea there is to create some underground trenches.
Capture it.
That will capture a lot of that water.
Great, great. Second question is, will the sustainable landscape in the preferred restoration option be comprised primarily of plants indigenous to Southern California?
We've approximated it at about 50% will be California native plants. The rest will be drought tolerant. All of them will be drought tolerant, but 50%, well, I should say, a minimum of 50% will be native landscaping.
Okay, and just again, for the record, I know you answered this, but what are the one-time and ongoing costs estimated if we choose to go with the preferred restoration project? And how much funding for this project has been identified to date?
Okay, the preferred option estimate is $390,000 in capital funding. And to go over the funding options for those, we have a number of sources. We're working with the Department of Water and Power on a $50,000 rebate that we'll be working with them on. The Los Angeles Conservation Corps has received $100,000 from Proposition 40, which will be mainly going into the North Lawn. In fact, they will actually be building the North Lawn, the Conservation Corps will be, or, not the North Lawn, but planting in the North Lawn. We've got a $10,000 grant from the Metropolitan Water District, and we haven't figured out the exact cost benefit to this, but we're having, we have a great resource in the Scotts Company, who's widely known for other things other than plants and things like that, but they've expanded their, in their portfolio to get more into organic-type fertilizers, things like that.
That's beautiful.
So, they're going to be making a big donation.
My last question is, why are the annual maintenance costs associated with the environmentally friendly preferred restoration options significantly higher than if we just went back to the old turf option?
Quite simply, it's a lot faster to mow turf. I mean, it's just, it's a single kind of man-or-woman operation, and with the garden areas, it's our opinion, and I will say that there's others that don't agree with us, but it's our opinion that because it's City Hall, we're going to have to give it special care to make sure that it continues to look to the level that it needs to look and to represent this building. So, essentially.
Thank you. Thank you for all those answers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Weeza, the 14th.
Thank you, Mr. President. And first, I want to congratulate the departments for doing a wonderful job in taking an unfortunate situation with the destruction of our lawn and taking advantage of this opportunity, quite frankly, because throughout the city, we are hearing cries and advocacy for more drought-resistant native plantings throughout the city. In fact, in Iguac, in my district, we have a community task force that has been charged with changing the current landscape on our medians on Iguac Boulevard and Colorado Boulevard to better landscaping, and they're proposing more drought-resistant native plantings. And we hear this happening throughout the city. So, we took this unfortunate situation and made it a good one for us to move in that direction as well. It's good for the environment, it's more beautiful, and for all the reasons stated by the public speakers. And also, as you had your outreach in downtown, I, we've heard the residents ask us to do this, I want to thank you as well for doing wonderful outreach. It was in a manner that listened. It wasn't just going through the motions, but we certainly got, I think, what's a win-win for everyone. And also, you know, given the situation we are with our water, I understand this is going in the direction of reducing our water consumption. And I want to congratulate the department for, the last few years, I think you reduced water consumption by 30 to 40%. It wasn't as clear in those graphs that you showed us, but that is remarkable. And I know we're a leader in the country in doing that. And I just want to applaud you and ask that we continue going in that direction. I know there's some bumps when we initially had our additional water reduction calls and mandates that we had as a city, and we got calls from our constituents that some of our lawns and our, some of the grass in our parks was becoming a little bit grayer, but we went, we got through that bump, we learned from it, and we're moving forward to show that we can continue to have more water reduction, and at the same time, have our greens grow and make them native, and also make them water drought resistant. So, thank you for your work here. I look forward to making this happen. When is the groundbreaking and when is the ribbon cutting?
I'll let Ramon Barajas speak to that point.
Ramon Barajas, Superintendent for Reckon Parks. Groundbreaking, we're hoping the first couple weeks of May. So, I mean, I'm sorry, groundbreaking is this week, where we kind of started, but ribbon cutting is going to be the first week of May, first, second week.
So, we'll finish this project when?
Like, first or second week of May, of this year.
First or second week of May. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to first echo some of the comments made by my colleagues and commending Ms. Perry for her work on this and our city for... for her work on this and our city for reducing water up to this point at City Hall and other places. I have a lot of questions, and I also have to say, I was actually pretty excited that Occupy LA destroyed our lawn so completely, because I thought this would make it an opportunity that we couldn't miss to turn City Hall lawn into really an example for the rest of the country in how to do this. First, on the expense, are we calculating our water savings into the number of 396 to do this, or is that just prospective? Because I think we should be calculating the water that we save as part of that number.
Yeah, the, well, it's all good, but unfortunately, the actual water savings amounts to about $2,000 annually from that will result from this project. And that's based on calculations that we perform with the Department of Water and Power.
That seems hard to believe, that if we move from lawn to drought tolerant plants, that it would be such a modest savings.
Well, it's, if you look at it as a, you've got to look at the city in its totality, because it's really the combination of projects like this and all the stuff that we've done, all the projects that we've done across the city, that gets us to those more than billion gallons of water savings. So it may seem nominal as it pertains just to City Hall, but it's not. It's important, not only because it adds, just adds, you know, a small percentage, but it adds to the, further adds really to the education to the residents of things that they can do in their lawn area. And we hope to, you know, further that by putting out signage and others, in a second phase is to help educate people in that.
I agree, and that's part of why I think this is.
Councilmember, we also, about three years.
Will you check your mic down there? Just straighten them out a little thing.
And I'm not sure you should be taking my time for this answer, because I have another question.
All right.
You can answer it later. I agree that the education component is so important, that's part of why I'm so excited about this. I would ask, with that in mind, why we're recommending this alternative as opposed to the more aggressive alternative? As long as we're trying to set an example, why don't we set a more aggressive example? And what would the cost be of the more aggressive example, the third option?
Well, the third option approached a capital cost of about 600,000, I think it was $590,000 in the presentation. The reason why is, well, there's a couple of reasons why. One, we were looking at, what led us to this was more of a balanced approach, which still allowed a lot of the events. There was a lot of people that wanted still some turf left. The turf provides the opportunity to do the more than 160 events that take place out there. That's not to say that you couldn't do those same events on decomposed granite. But there was also some cultural significance as we began to, as we worked through this process with Cultural Heritage Commission and City Planning, that there was some significance to the appearance and what that gave as an historical defining feature. So, again, it was, I looked at it as a balanced approach to getting to where we are at, and that's why kind of we fell away from option three, and it obviously was more expensive and a lot more to maintain as well.
What's the additional cost to maintain per year?
The, currently, we spend $75,000, and the annual maintenance estimated cost for option three was $180,000, so it's more than, more than double.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reyes. Thank you, Council President. I was just having this conversation with Councilman Perry, and I was inquiring the opportunity to honor those who have played a big role in our, the greening of this great city, and perhaps looking at some of the beds that are there, that are distinguished for certain kinds of plantings, sectionalizing them so that there's more than one opportunity. So we have the giants like Dorothy Green and Scott Wilson from Northeast Trees, who dedicated their lives to greening and being much more strategic and intelligent about how we treat our earth through systems and ecosystems and natural habitats. And so this would be a learning experience and memorializing these folks, these very important people. Perhaps make it a fundraising tool so that we can get ongoing maintenance, supplement the costs of reaching that level of presentation. It could be a teaching moment, not only in how we plant these beds, but also bring to life those who dedicated their whole career, their existence to taking care of our city, our water system, the watershed, the plant lives. Dorothy Green's amazing, Scott Wilson, who's been memorialized. I mean, these are opportunities. Can we structure with the support of the council to be strategic in how we look at these beds as fundraising opportunities in the name of these giants?
I think we absolutely could do that, and I think it's, you know, as much as it is to educate the community on the types of plants that we're putting in and what they could do in their own backyards, but I think also the signage that we're proposing to do down the road is, could be to recognize those individuals that were instrumental in getting us to this point. So maybe if that was the council's desire, maybe that's a route that we could, we could go down.
So may I make a friendly amendment, Councilman Perry, in our actions? And I know this is a concept and idea you wanted to do earlier, and just to make this part of the action, so that we have the opportunity to have this vehicle, if you will, that allows us to acknowledge these amazing people and make that a fundraising opportunity as well?
Well, I would just suggest, why don't we have a discussion with Project Restore on all of that, and also take an assessment of the, I would just suggest that, and come back to a vehicle to do the whole City Hall grounds, the whole City Hall East, Fletcher Bowery Square. I would just say we're going to do that.
Well, my friendly amendment is to focus on what's in front of us. Doesn't mean Project Restore can't revisit it later. I want to make sure we have a vehicle and a directive today.
I understand that, but I would just say, if you don't know what's behind and what it's named for down there now, we may have some conflict, whether we want to do pavers as opposed to flowerbed naming for that recognition. I think it should be discussed formally, and this is my thought. So, to add that, just look at the whole picture. Don't lock us into anything, because I, on that.
There's a second on my motion. Thank you.
Got it. All right, a second on the motion. Can you add some of my friendly stuff and do too? So we just look at a wide spread, Project Restore, come back on the whole issue at this. That's good. Any objection to that friendship? Okay, no objection. Okay, thank you very much. I hope the clerk got that down right. Mr. Corretz, for a second time.
Well, at least a portion of what I was going to ask may be moot if we try to fund this on a fundraising basis, but my question was going to be how we're planning to fund whatever we're short in terms of the grants that we've already received. Hopefully, the answer is through private fundraising, but what were our other plans to do that?
Well, the preferable way is private funds, and we are getting some. I mean, we've made some strides in, great thanks to the mayor's office and the council office in helping us make those contacts. But the balance of the funding is, this project, because it is a city park, it is eligible for Quimby funds, so under the leadership of Councilwoman Perry, we'll be looking at using Quimby funds to help us with this as well.
So hopefully, a combination of those two directions, Quimby funds and whatever private fundraising, which I think is a great signature opportunity for a lot of folks in the most visible building in the city. That sounds great.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. Ms. Perry to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a pitch there to all those who care about the drought tolerant and making this look good and bringing it back for the whole city. You know, Quimby funds are great. I put mine in. It'd be lovely for you to join me. Think about it, your proportional share. Maybe we can do something based on the distance you're away from City Hall, so Joe, you could put in the least amount, something like that. But I'm making a pitch here. Hope you hear me. Hope you pitch in. Thank you.
That's a good pitch, and I want to help you too on that, Jan. Thank you very much. That completes our comment. A lot of work.
I want to just say thank you to the mayor and his staff, especially Romel Pasqual and Jenny Carrion Delacy for their support and dedication to this project.
Thank you, everybody. Let's open the roll.
Okay.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, forthwith on that. Madam Clerk, let's just go through some of these things real quick right here. Item three, we're going to.
That item's been continued to February 17th.
Very good, on item number three. Let's go right now to item 16.
Item 16 has been voted on already.
Very good.
Bill, we're getting it. We're trying.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is item 24, called Special by Councilman Rosendahl, and for cards.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President. Could I ask our folks to come up here, Jim Featherstone and his folks? First, remember the other day when we honored what we're doing, and I want to acknowledge Jim Featherstone and Larry Meyerhoff for all of their efforts in achieving the city's recent tsunami-ready designation. On March 29, 2011, following the tragic earthquake and tsunami in Japan, I introduced a motion requesting a report back on the feasibility and cost of installing an emergency tsunami siren along our coast. I've been told the cost for such a system would be at least $5 million, money obviously that the city doesn't have. Questions, gentlemen? Who have you approached in seeking grant funding, and are there any stones left unturned and could potentially fund such a system?
Good morning. Jim Featherstone, General Manager of Emergency Management Department. We've looked at various federal grant opportunities. One of the key issues we have to face is that if we use federal grant money, it has to have a regional impact. We're not just talking about the three inundation areas that are Los Angeles City specific. It would have to be a county-wide effort. The county actually has done some testing, I believe it's in, which inundation area?
The Marina, Marina Del Rey.
Right.
And they abandoned it, they didn't necessarily see the cost effectiveness of the siren system. EMD is pro-siren.
Okay, let me ask you this. If funding was available, are sirens something the Emergency Management Department would recommend as part of a series of mass notification methods?
Absolutely, especially for a distant tsunami where we actually have time, the sirens would make a difference.
To get our act together. Okay, next question. Have you been in contact with the Los Angeles County Office of Emergency Management regarding a potentially county-wide emergency warning system? I know that Zeb Yarzloski made a comment about it once, John Knobby made a comment about it, and LA County, the entire coast, obviously should have it. So what I want to do, colleagues, is when we get to this point, I'm going to move to amend the communication from the chair and member of the Public Safety Committee to add the following language. Direct the Emergency Management Department to work with the Los Angeles County Office of Emergency Management to explore the feasibility of a county-wide tsunami siren warning system. Do I have a second for that?
Yes, I have a second.
For Mr. Englander over there. Colleagues, I just want to put that out there.
Very good.
We both have to work together on that. And just last point I want to make is Humboldt County was able to receive grant funding from the California Emergency Management Agency for a siren system, which was actually used during last year's Japanese earthquake-triggered tsunami. Has the Cal EMA approached Los Angeles with any sort of grant opportunity?
Not at this time, Councilmember. What we can do, though, is we can reach out more aggressively to Cal EMA to see if there's possible state grant money available for the siren system here in Los Angeles.
Great, thank you very much. And colleagues, if you're with me on this, I'd like a unanimous vote to do with that amendment, which is the county as well, and move forward. We should have sirens on the beach in all LA County. God forbid we have a tsunami of such proportion.
Very good, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you so much. Mr. Englander.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a second and recognize Mr. Rosendahl's leadership on this. Bill? Bill? I'm recognizing you. I wanted, I wanted to say thank you, because you approached me on this early on in saying, look, we live in a coastal community. This happens at any time, anywhere, and the only time people are ever talking about it is right after the fact. The only time there's ever a policy window of opportunity to effect any change or leadership is typically right after the fact, whether it's an earthquake or tsunami, wherever it happens. And you have been leading this effort, focused on this, not only right after Japan occurred, not only after Sri Lanka, but all, you've been there pushing this effort forward continuously. And so I applaud you on that. I think we should look for all opportunities for funding available and work closely with the county, and make sure that people are aware that this is an issue, that it could occur at any time when we least expect it. So thank you for focusing on this. Appreciate it.
Mr. Alakon. Thank you. Richard Alakon.
Is this something that has to be approved by the Coastal Commission?
I don't believe so. We would definitely, we'd check into any zoning or licensing issues.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think everything has to be checked by the Coastal Commission, generally speaking. So if you could just ensure that you run it by them before we get too deep into this.
Yes, sir. And that was one of the things, in talking with the county, they came up with a list of things why this, they weren't necessarily in favor of it. We just saw them as momentarily, momentary obstacles. One of the things was the periodic testing and noise complaints. We had a similar set of challenges, just putting up signage, where people resisted the signage. So if we actually go to a siren system, we'll have to go through a series of public education and awareness processes to make folks, not make, to encourage folks to understand that this is in their best interests. But we would certainly have conversations with the Coastal Commission.
Thank you very much.
I think, I think those concerns of the community are legitimate.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Members, we may lose a quorum, so let's keep it tight. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. As briefly as possible, I know the department is endeavoring to try to take into account people of all needs in this city and their emergency preparedness. If we have a siren system, has thought been given to supplements to that to be able to provide warning to those who are hearing impaired or who otherwise can't, for whom a siren is not helpful?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Kocorian. We've looked at that because our emergency efforts right now in the contemporary paradigm is what we call the whole of community. Everyone, all the different constituencies in the community need to be considered. A consideration that we'd need to augment the siren system is, we highly recommend that the NOAA radio, which has, you get the NOAA, the NOAA radio has a flashing light on it for those with a hearing impairment. It'd also be, we would recommend it be coupled with the Alert LA County Warning System, where residents can self-subscribe, they get a phone call, they get a text message, they get an email, and that can go to, also to their personal cell phone. The other issue is the standing emergency alert system, which all of us have seen for years. Ultimately, we get down to persons with disabilities through a registry process would actually get a live door knock from first responders.
Thank you very much. There's no other speakers on the queue. Mr. Featherstone, thank you very much, and your staff. Let's open the roll on this.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I believe there was a card on this item.
Oh, you're very good. I apologize to Mr. Walsh, please, John Walsh. Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. And so now, we have no other speakers. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
A forthwith on that matter. Thank you very much. Ms. Perry?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I need to reconsider item number 20. I need to move option two, which is what we discussed, so we could reconsider.
On reconsideration, let's open the roll on reconsideration, item 20. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, open for reconsideration.
And that's to move the preferred option number two.
Move preferred option number two for City Hall renovation. So that's the, recommend it. Open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President, and that would also include Councilmember Reyes's motion and your friendly.
Friendly, and my extra friendly amendment, too, to talk to Project Restore and put everybody in a room. Okay? You good with that? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Very good. Okay, next item.
Item 27, called Special for Cards.
Dr. Williams. Dr. Williams, no Dr. Williams, so let's note him for the file. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next item.
Item 30, called Special for Cards.
Yeah, Mr. Walsh. Mr. John Walsh. Wave, thank you, Mr. Walsh. There's no cards. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next item.
Item 36 for Cards.
All right, let's hold on 36 for just a one moment. Let's go to 39, I think it is.
Yes, item 39, called Special by Councilman Englander, and for Cards.
Right, the card is, we have one card. Armin Najarian, if you'd like to speak real quick on this one, 39.
Respectable City Councilmembers, dear fellow Angelinos, I actually endorse with resolution Perry-Garcetti-Zein relative to, um, request, uh, we represent a request, uh, you know, to, you know, to provide direct, uh, city oversight, uh, direct city oversight of, uh, housing authorities, uh, the direct city oversight of housing authority of the City of Los Angeles. Actually, uh, with direct city oversight, um, of housing, uh, authority necessary very much, because, uh, lots of people, Angelinos, wait for, um, city, uh, housing vouchers. Average, uh, waiting period is, uh, three years. About three years, you know, with, um, Department of, uh, Urban Housing Development, uh, it's supposed to, um, um, provide those vouchers to those, uh, applicants. And I believe that, uh, maybe direct city oversight will help those expedited, uh, you know, distribution of vouchers to thousands of Angelinos, thousands of poor Angelinos with, for those city vouchers. It was good for business as well, because business people will definitely, uh, benefit, you know, all those, uh, city housing vouchers, if they receive those city housing vouchers. And, uh, you know, with many development, uh, real estate developers, you know, wait for city housing vouchers. You can read them on those Penny Saver, for instance, ads. You can read, uh, ad where, say, uh, section eight is welcome, and city housing vouchers are very important for developing, uh, real estate in the City of Los Angeles. Let's not be naive. Um, thousands of Angelinos won't be able to afford, uh, uh, you know, to live in a decent, uh, housing unit without the help of those, uh, uh, city vouchers. And I believe a direct city oversight must be accountable, must actually, uh, represent, uh, quite a measure of accountability, measure of, uh, accountability to the public, and, uh, publishes reports every month, you know, for those vouchers being distributed or not, or was measured, uh, will be audited, and, uh, uh, was audited, being reported to the public every month, you know, on a monthly basis, so people, uh, knew exactly where money being spent for, for what will actually imminent corruption.
Thank you very much. Also on this item 39, Donna Perman in the Valley. Donna, you there?
Yeah, I am. Okay, I think it's a very bad idea to do the same-day registration and be able to vote. There is absolutely no way that the people can be, check these people out, see their background, and make sure that, uh, there's not even terrorists. There's no way that the, even a person could even register them in time and be able to, uh, be able to vote at the same time. This is ridiculous. I'm gonna leave my time for other things, but I think that, I think you vote, no, 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 no.
Thank you, Donna, very much. John Walsh, please. Mr. Walsh, pass. Thank you very much. That completes it. We have two speakers on the queue, Mr. Coretts and Mr. Alakon.
I'd just say, very briefly, this has been done in other states. Participation and voting has gone up dramatically. There are controls in this that prevent fraud, um, multiple opportunities for provisional ballots and checking. Every one of these ballots will be double-checked. I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon, the maker of the motion, the Chairman of the Committee, and the distinguished man for the moment from the great Seventh District.
Take one strike away, Mr. ... Thank you, Mr. Coretts, for supporting, uh, this measure, although I do have to amend the motion slightly to, uh, make reference to, um, adopting, uh, an accompanying resolution to include in the city's legislative program support for not AB 1426, but 1436. Um, other than that, I ask for your aye, aye vote. This is to encourage democracy. This is to have more people participate in the process. In those states where they do include it, um, there is a, uh, I don't want to say dramatic increase in voting, but there is a definite increase in, in voting participation, and isn't that what democracy is all about? Uh, also, with regard to checking voting records, there's, there's nothing that, that somebody who registers on the same day or within 15 days, uh, would have to go through that they don't go through now. And so, uh, so I'm, I, I think this is, uh, good in the City of Los Angeles, where we've seen diminished participation at the polls each and every year. Uh, this might, uh, help us move, uh, that trend, uh, in reverse.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Obviously for it, it opens up a democracy to more people, it makes it more effective. It's a great motion, and of course, I, I ask everybody to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other speakers on the queue. Open the roll. As amended. As amended. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item will be 40. We have a card from Bad Eyes, Donna Perman.
Okay. I have to see what number 40 was again.
Donna, I want you to be prepared next time.
Okay, sorry. I had lost my, um, the other part, because they don't have a continuation agenda. Okay, what was this again for?
Donna, let me come back here just a minute if you don't know. All right, let's go. There's no speakers on the queue. And this item, Madam Clerk, would you read it into the record?
This is a motion Perry-Zein relative to, uh, approve negotiated payment for, uh, city services to the 2012 Grammy Awards at the Staples Center.
Thank you very much. Donna, we're going to you for 30 seconds.
Yes, okay. Uh, we need to, I, um, anyway, we need to not, uh, I don't believe in sending money for the, uh, Staples Center, uh, because they're gonna be, I, uh, they're gonna be getting the revenue over there. I don't believe that we're gonna be getting anything, uh, any benefit from this, and I don't see why the city is paying for that. I believe the Staples Center is gonna give me the benefits. But if we have to pay for it, I think then, uh, we should be able, the Staples Center should be able to pay it back, uh, in their revenue, pay the city back, and with interest. So I think 25% to 30% interest, which sounds good.
Thank you very much, Donna. Appreciate that. There, uh, Ms. Perry.
So, Mr. Chair, and it was a pleasure to work together with Mr. Zain and Public Works to contain the costs on this and to make sure that we continue to encourage this program to conduct itself in the City of Los Angeles, so that when people enter into the process of holding events in the city, that they, they understand what the rules of engagement are. I think this will set a very good precedent for, uh, demonstrating to other projects that may come in the future, uh, that we are business-friendly, but we are mindful of, uh, being good shepherds of the taxpayers and, uh, making sure that our costs are well-managed and well-contained.
Thank you. And, uh, any, no other speakers on the queue? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Very good. And we have number 38, please.
Oh, yeah.
Can you read that into the record?
Item 38, called Special by Councilman Perry and for Cards.
38.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chair. So, uh, what I'm going to ask for today is, uh, that, uh, we receive and file number 38. We are going to continue the dialogue regarding the oversight of the housing authority, uh, for the City of Los Angeles, but I thought it might be best to receive and file after getting some advice from the chief legislative analyst, so that we can continue to determine precisely what type of legislation would be needed for city oversight on the, on HACLA, the Housing Authority, uh, City of Los Angeles. I'd like to instruct the chief legislative analyst to report to Housing Committee, HCD, with recommendations that the city can implement, not to control the day-to-day operations of the agency, but to have selected oversight over HACLA actions. So I, I hope, uh, I'm hopeful that this is something we can accomplish to better serve our city, and, um, that's my recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Yes, of course.
Appreciate the recommendations. There's no, uh, speakers on the queue. We have one card. Mr. Najarian, I believe has left the chambers. So we're gonna put his card into the record. There's no speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That completes that. Now, we have one more item. Is that correct?
Yes, item 36, called Special for Cards.
Good. All right, we're gonna have one-minute public comment. All of you who've been sitting here the whole meeting, please come up closer, so we can all get you right now. Kathy Seal from the Sierra Club, James Ralston. James Ralston. Vicky Kirshenbaum, come on up. Go ahead, please. State your name for the record.
Kathy Seal, Sierra Club, um, please vote in favor of this. We're in favor as well for, um, for many reasons. I'll cite only two. One is that, um, as you probably know, Styrofoam leaches styrene, which has recently been declared a carcinogen, and, um, there's more Styrofoam used in low-income communities, there's more fast food in low-income communities, and who eats fast food? A lot of these people are children. Do we really want to have them, um, ingesting a carcinogen when they're so vulnerable and in their developmental stage, when, um, it really makes a difference for them? I think, no, not for anyone, but especially not in low-income communities. Second of all, sales of Styrofoam are way down. There's been bans in 54 locations. Um, and on the other hand, there's a growing industry of healthy, environmentally-friendly containers. It's growing, it'll, it will create jobs, it's, it's, um, so being in favor of this will help the economy, help jobs, um, as well as being good for the environmental health of our children. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Okay, my name's James Ralston. I'm, uh, from the West Side, I work at UCLA. The, uh, along with the, the points just made, uh, keep in mind how much the city has to spend cleaning the stuff up from the beaches and the parks. So it's, it's a complete win on this. Please endorse this.
Thank you, James. Vicky.
Hi, I strongly urge you to adopt the resolution to, uh, support SB 568. A lot of great stuff has been said about the, uh, harm that Styrofoam causes. Also, we can't get rid of this stuff. We cannot biodegrade it, we can't recycle it. It is filling our landfills, it's getting into our oceans and harming our wildlife. The City of San Francisco, uh, transitioned off Styrofoam quickly, easily, back in 2007. Let's do this.
Pronounce your last name correctly for me, Vicky, real quick.
My last name is Kirshenbaum.
Thank you very much, Vicky. Let's have Lisa Boyle come up, Bill Hickman, and, uh, Arrel Jacobs. Please.
Hi, I'm Lisa Cosboyle. I'm an environmental attorney. I'm on the board of Heal the Bay. I'm the co-founder of Plastic Pollution Coalition, and I'm a former Los Angeles County Deputy District Attorney. I'm here to encourage the City Council to support Senate Bill 568 banning polystyrene from fast-food containers in California. Polystyrene food containers are overwhelming our streams, our beaches, and our bay. It breaks down into small pieces that look like fish eggs and get consumed by our aquatic creatures, and then it enters into our food chain. But you don't have to wait to eat contaminated fish to get styrene, because it leaches directly from polystyrene food containers into our food and drink. An EPA study showed that 100% of us have styrene in our fatty tissues. Styrofoam food containers...
It's a good thing to ban. Thank you. I've finished it for you. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Bill Hickman, uh, from the Surf Rider Foundation. I'm gonna speak on behalf of our activist here to help conserve a little bit of time. Surf Rider is proud to co-sponsor SB 568 because we see the impact of expanded polystyrene litter on the marine ecosystem. Uh, this foam is always a top item at our beach cleanups, and it's really hard to get because it's so lightweight and breaks apart, which is why we really need source reductions like SB 568 and the separate plastic bag ban you guys are considering. Senator Alan Lowenthal from Long Beach authored the bill because Long Beach is at the end of the LA River, and he sees the impacts after the rain as the shoreline is littered with plastic, uh, and we need to consider all of it that's not on the beach and making it out to the soup, to the ocean, uh, turn it into, uh, plastic soup over time. Seventeen Los Angeles neighborhood councils sent in support letters representing over 800,000 Angelinos. Uh, business suppliers need to be leaders in innovation and commit to better alternatives, but unfortunately can't expect them to regulate themselves. Uh, there's a patchwork of regulations, and this can help, uh, provide a level playing field for businesses statewide, so we...
Thank you. Graham Hamilton, please. Evelyn Bravo and Nancy Hastings.
I would like to make it quick and cede my time so you guys can get out of here, but please support, uh, this resolution.
Tell us your name.
My name is Graham Hamilton. I'm here with the Surf Rider Foundation.
Thank you, Graham.
Good afternoon, I'm Nancy Hastings. Uh, support the comments made by Bill Hickman from Surf Rider Foundation, and as a mom, I please ask you to support this ban. My daughter and I go to the beach all the time. We were there at Dockweiler just a couple weeks ago, and after a half an hour of sliding on the sand berms, instead of playing, we picked up Styrofoam. I don't want that for my daughter. Please, support this. Thank you.
Craig Callwalder. Teresa Brady and John Walsh, please.
Hi, I'm Craig Callwalder. I'm with the South Bay Chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. I strongly urge you to support SB 568. Um, we've had some cities in the South Bay vote for this, for instance, from Rosa Beach. We're working on the others, but the City of LA would make a leadership statement by supporting this, and I urge you to back SB 568. Thank you.
For all the reasons that they've already said, for the toxicity of the Styrofoam, vote for it.
Thank you. State your name.
Teresa Brady.
Thanks, Teresa. Very good. John Walsh. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, new post up, put up yesterday. Here you go. Here is the enemy! How many of you are drinking from it? You evil, evil, evil killer of fish! I'm telling you right now, where did I get this? Where did I get this coffee from hell? Down at Homeboy Industries. You don't have to wait to the year 2016. If you want to be politically correct, and I'm politically correct, why don't you ban the selling of Styrofoam and plastic in cups and in food on your own turf? I don't hear anything about it, but I have destroyed the evil! HollywoodHighlands.org. I'm for everything politically correct. Donna Pearlman. Perman, Donna Perman.
Yeah. The bottom line, the city councils can decide what we eat and how we bring it home. I'm sorry, uh, the people going after the fast-food restaurants. Has anybody asked the restaurants how they feel about this bill? How can city council decide what private, private industry does? Will the paper containers work and will it help the people, uh, will it help the people's needs? Is this a way to, uh, driz, uh, how mu... Is this a way to find out how much we eat? So I don't think that this is a very good thing. I don't think we should be banning this Styrofoam, and I wanted to say, um, okay, last...
I was gonna say, have a good afternoon, Donna.
Have a good afternoon.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things that haven't been mentioned. A study of LA River debris found 71% of the debris found in the LA River was plastic foam. Uh, Styrofoam leaches from packaging, and the majority of LAUSD students eat from Styrofoam every day. Uh, there have been arguments made at the state level about it burdening restaurants. Studies have found that there's no additional expense when you use an alternative. The two main manufacturers of this stuff also manufacture the alternative, so that The two main manufacturers of this stuff also manufacture the alternative, so that would take them moving their employees around a little bit, but would actually wouldn't have any impact them, on them. And as I've found in studies of cities in the LA County area that recycle styrofoam, virtually all of it, because it's contaminated with food, actually winds up in landfills. Even though it goes into our, our blue bins, it winds up mostly being trashed anyway. So, I would ask that you support this, and frankly, if LA City doesn't support this item, it'll have tough sledding in Sacramento. I believe if we support this, it has a good chance of passing, so I ask for your eye vote.
Joe Buscaino from the Great Harbor.
President, colleagues, I stand in support of this resolution. Thanks to those from SunRider who are here to speak for this resolution. I, we congratulate you and commend you for your effort. Colleagues, as you know, the harbor area, the Great 15th is home to many beautiful beaches, and Cabrillo Beach, Royal Palms, and my son's school last Saturday had a beach cleanup, and I took my son there, and sure enough, we came across some, some of these items, styrofoam items. And through the, the local Boy Scouts and PAC 500, oftentimes, we do our beach cleanups and often come across these, this types of materials. So, with that, and I do know that the great John Ogine, down at Cabrillo, at the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium, he spent a lifetime down at the harbor, down at the water, through the well-watching, and I'm sure he's seen a lot down at the water. I'm sure he's, I'm sure he's seen a lot in the ocean. So, it's, I stand to support this, and I, you know, obviously, being, living, being born, raised, and live in the harbor area, this is an item, that resolution, that's so important to me and my family, and of course, to protect the oceans of our Great Pacific Ocean, something we do stand to support. Thank you.
And Councilman John Ogine, 55 years was his service? 55 years of service. It's a lifeguard, a great lifeguard. Paul Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, to Mr. Kretz's point about difficulty in Sacramento, this bill, or version of this bill, was introduced every single year that I was in the legislature, and it failed every single year because of strong opposition from the California Restaurants Association, frankly. And the truth is that in the, in each ensuing year, we learn more and more about the health impacts of serving especially hot food in polystyrene containers. So, on that basis alone, we should be standing up and supporting this. But when you add to it the environmental, the gross environmental damage that's caused to our inland waterways and to our ocean by this packaging, this really is a very easy matter for us to stand in support of. When it comes to, Ms. Perryman talked about the, the jobs impact and the business impact. Look, McDonald's, when it introduced the Big Mac, it sold it in a polystyrene container. For years, McDonald's burgers were served in polystyrene containers, but they're not anymore, because of negotiation that the McDonald's did with the Environmental Defense Fund and others in the environmental community. They now have non-polystyrene packaging. It hasn't hurt McDonald's sales, it hasn't hurt McDonald's bottom line, it hasn't caused McDonald's to lay off workers. So, really, I think the Restaurant Association needs to get in line with the, the trend that we're seeing internationally to get away from this packaging, and so, so should this council. We should stand in strong support of Senator Lowenthal's legislation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosenthal, for one 10-second time.
Good, everybody. We have a beach that's incredible, and we're destroying it if we allow styrofoam. We destroy it if we allow plastic. And you look at my beaches, Playa del Rey, Venice, and, and up in the Palisades, they're incredible beaches, and it's outrageous. I certainly agree that we should be drinking our drinks out of a cup like this.
And what's it say on the cup? What's it say on the cup?
It says, "Homeboy."
That's "Homeboy." Let's hear it for "Homeboy."
But the bottom line is, we as leaders should set examples. I, I really would like to see us get rid of this around this horseshoe and go to this and this, okay? We can set it by example. It's important for us to show that kind of leadership, but with this is a no-brainer. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's comment on this. There are no further speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Twelve eyes, so that's very good, right there. Want to make it pass. And let's go forthwith on this. This matter has passed. Madam Clerk, is there any announcements?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting a referral.
So ordered.
That clears the desk.
Clear. Any announcements? Any announcements? One announcement, Mr. Alocorn.
I just want to recognize the action of the Ninth Circuit Court to invalidate Prop 8, and congratulate Mr. Rosenthal in particular. He's been a champion of, of the LGBT community, and certainly relishes that. We have more work to do. They did stay it, and it may be appealed within the next 21 days. But in the meantime, congratulations to the LGBT community today.
Thank you very much. No other announcements, any adjourning motions? I see no adjourning motions. Members, this meeting is concluded and adjourned. Have a good day. Thank you.